Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, June 19th Planning Commission meeting at the Veterans Memorial Building at 6:00 PM and we're at 209 Surf Street, back to our regular home tonight. So, we have four members of the commission here and Michael's absent at this point, hopefully he'll make it in, but we have enough to establish forums, so I'll call the meeting to order. Could we please observe a moment of silence? Thank you very much. Let's stand, face the flag, and begin the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
(inaudible)
Okay, this is a time delegated to members of the public that wish to address... Oh, I'm sorry, I missed a spot. We have planning commissioners and announcements at this time.
Yeah, I'd like to note that currently there is a sewer line leaking in between Java and Island Street on Saddlewood. A couple of friends of mine had tested the water and has chloroform bacteria, so hopefully the exfiltrating sewage line will be repaired quickly.
Okay, any other announcements? Okay. I believe there's a vacation rental meeting tomorrow. Is that true, Scott?
Yeah, we're having a meeting, our forum on vacation rentals sponsored by city council members, Heding and McPherson. It starts, it's at the community center and will run from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM tomorrow evening.
So it's at the community center?
Correct.
From 6:00 PM?
Yeah, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, yes.
Anybody interested in the vacation rental, short-term rental ordinance that's coming up? That's the place to go find out and voice your opinions. So at this point, this is the time we delegate towards public comment and this is for items that are not, that do not appear on the agenda. So if you're here to speak about Panorama, we'll be getting to that shortly. So if you could hold your opinions till after we have our staff report, that would be appreciated. We'll be doing things a little bit differently at this point when we go into public comment for Panorama. If we could have, if we could have the speakers maybe line up on the south side of the bill, the room here to come to the next, to be the next speaker, that might alleviate some of the uncertainty about who's going to speak next and we can go in an orderly fashion. So do we have anybody wishing to speak to items not on the agenda tonight? Please come forward, state your name.
Can I use the overhead?
AG, oh, there we go.
Thank you. My name is Betty Winholts and I want to make an announcement about a gathering that's Thursday evening at 5:00, at 6:00 also, everything's 6:00 this week. And it's related to our immigrant families and people who are trying to seek asylum. And there's different communities in the county are hosting some kind of gathering and Morro Bay is involved and it will be at City Park or Triangle Park up there off of Harbor and Morro Bay Boulevard at 6:00 on Thursday evening. And they're called pop-up demonstrations around the county to show our support for family, family life, for children who have been ripped from their families. And, oh, so sad. So, this quote is from someone who said, "Silence is consent." So I hope to see many people there tomorrow night. Thank you. Or Thursday night.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to items not on the agenda?
Good evening. I'm Eric Four. I'd like to speak about the 25-foot height limit that, as long as I've lived here 30 years, that has been the height limit with some exceptions. As far as I knew, the exceptions always had to do with penetrations through it for chimneys and ventilation and vents and so forth. At the last meeting, you are now talking about a whole new set of rules that apply to roof lines and I don't know where you ever got this extra ruling, but you're now interpreting it so that you can basically allow three-story buildings where there was originally only two-story buildings. You say that's the rule, but in fact, you have made the rule. Somebody in the planning department has changed the rule from 25-foot flat to this extra thing having to do with roof lines. Finally, I wanted to say that one of your members up here made the absurd weight, I would say, when he proposed that the applicant who was trying to apply for approximately 30 feet and should be given equal credence with the rest of the community, which is about 10,000 citizens, and that according to him, we should simply split the difference from 25-foot to 30-foot, which would be 27 and 1/2 foot. One person versus 10,000 people. I think that's rather absurd.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, please. Okay, last chance, seeing none. We'll move on to presentations. We have none and so therefore move on to the consent calendar. We have A1, which is the current and advanced planning processing list, and the approval of the minutes for March 20th, 2018. Do we have any comment or discussion on these items? Okay, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar, A1 and A2.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 4-0, motion passes. So moving on to B1, we have case number CPO-500 and UPO-440. This is the location at 3300 Panorama Drive in Morro Bay. And can, are you ready with the staff report?
Yes, thank you. Before I start the staff report, I handed out to each of you a copy of three things. One was additional project-related public comment received after noon today. We posted everything else to the website and you were copied on emails for everything received before noon. Comments from California Coastal Commission that I got about an hour ago, and applicant's response to the MND public comment, that they wanted to make sure that you had that. So we have two experts here on our behalf. One is Jacqueline McCory from SWICA Environmental Consultants and they are the consultant that drafted the MND. And Aaron Labarre is either here or will be here shortly and he is with Slow County Health Services. We are here, as you mentioned, to talk about the proposed demolition for 3,300 Panorama. The scope of work is for demolition of two tanks formerly for jet fuel storage, one water tank, concrete foundation in the northeast corner, concrete berm, concrete perimeter around the foundation of the fuel tanks, related testing, restoration, and remediation. And as of note, 5.17 acres of the area will be disturbed by demo activities. And I want to clarify that that's not grading. Grading is only to create access through the berms for tank containment areas to get vehicles and emergency vehicles into the containment areas. Little history, we've had four previous Planning Commission public hearings. Two were non-actionable, but all public hearings included public notification, opportunity for public comment, and an opportunity for Planning Commission discussion. New information since the last Planning Commission hearing. City of Morro Bay produced an updated environmental report, mitigated negative declaration, and that was in February 2018. And I'm missing a parentheses at the end of that. The applicant provided new plans and reports as requested in the last public hearing. The applicant agreed to additional monitoring of site conditions during demo. The applicant agreed to additional insurance and performance bond as requested in the last public hearing. The ESHA was confirmed with a field study and mapped, also showing a 50-foot buffer Also, new information since the last public hearing. The applicant removed five or six trees without a permit. The applicant performed additional soil testing under the tanks. And the soil testing under the tanks, there was a little discussion about that. The county does not object to the fact that the applicant did the testing. They wanted to clarify that it doesn't replace any of their required testing as part of their permit. The testing results I got about two hours ago and they show that, I can read you a summary of it. The soil sampling was limited and will have to be redone from scratch after tank removal The shallow soil sampling showed that residual petroleum hydrocarbons are still present in the original oil sand layer beneath the tanks. The layer was specified to be six inches thick. Beneath this layer, only traces of petroleum hydrocarbons, less than 10 ppm's were detected. Soil sampling and visual inspection of the tanks show no indication of a release of jet fuel from the tanks. Soil sampling in other areas confirm the presence of residual petroleum hydrocarbons as previously found. And I have provided a copy of this report to SWICA as well as to the County Health Department. Also, new information since January 3, 2017. The applicant's contractor provided information on the type of trucks to be used. We have pictures of the trucks. There's the high-end, high-sided end dump truck that will be used for scrap metal, the low-sided end dump truck for concrete debris, and then a roll-off truck with or without a trailer. And the trailers can be left on-site, so the truck will just come and pick them up when they're full. We also, I think clarified last time what the truck access route would be. And I did clarify with the applicant's contractor that it won't be continuous truck trips, it'll be staging, demo materials, so demo work on-site. And then when they're ready to fill up trucks, then trucks will come on-site, be filled up, and go to the area where they're recycling or dropping off the materials. So it won't be day after day after day of trucks, it'll be a break between preparing materials and hauling materials. This is an overlay of the plan on the actual site and I wanted to clarify the two areas where the arrows are pointing are the areas that'll be graded. So there was some concern about destabilizing the hillside and erosion and the grading that's occurring is in those two areas. And there are significant erosion control measures to make sure that they restabilize those areas as well as anything else that is disturbed, not by grading, but by demo or by truck traffic or by equipment traveling over the areas. If the Planning Commission approves the project, what is required before work can begin? So I wanted to make it clear that no work on-site can happen until the applicant receives permits or approval, participation agreements from the following agencies. City of Morro Bay, they require a demo permit. Slow Public Health Department, they require a tank closure permit. Slow Air Pollution Control District, permit for soil disturbance. U.S. Fish and Wildlife Monitoring and Consultation. Regional Water Quality Control Board, general permit. California Department of Toxic Substance Control, notification and monitoring. And California Department of Fish and Wildlife, notification and monitoring. So following, if there was approval, there's still no work on-site. And again, no work on-site until they provide the city the required insurance and bonding documents. And the limits are $1 million, $2 million in general liability and auto, $5 million in all-risk liability insurance, and a surety bond equal to 150% of approved project valuation. Also, no work on-site until regulating jurisdictions approve the work schedule. And this has to do with the time of year that is restricted. There's limits on work during the nesting season and the Morro Bay Municipal Code restriction is February 1 through June 30. There's limits on demo and earthwork during nesting season according to the California and U.S. Fish and Wildlife, that's February 1 through September 15. And there's grading restrictions during rainy season, October 31st through April 1, which is the coastal land use plan policy. There's also no work on-site until jurisdictional approval of monitoring methods and plans for nose, noise, nose, that'd be good, noise regulation and monitoring, air quality monitoring, hazardous material handling, removal, and testing, ESHA protection verification and training. And the training is for all staff on-site to make sure that they understand the limits, what the orange fencing means, and what they can and can't do near the ESHA. Traffic plan signage and safety, truck weight verification, cultural resource monitoring and training. Still no work on-site until the city approves environmental compliance monitor and the applicant posts the construction activity signage on-site and that includes a phone number and a name of a person that the neighbors, the city, someone can call and they will be knowledgeable about the site and be able to correct any deficiencies. And the planning staff has recommended this for conditional approval by adopting Planning Commission Resolution 15-18, which includes findings for adoption of the MND and findings and conditions and environmental mitigation measures for approval of the project. I'm available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions for staff?
(inaudible) bear with me because I have lots of notes here. There's reference to videotaping the conditions of the road before and after to make sure that there's no damage due to the traffic. So my impression is that the videotaping hasn't been done yet or hasn't been done?
We can ask the applicant if they have done it. I don't believe that the city has done any yet.
I have a question with respect to the insurance. I'm even a little confused by it, so bear with me and I'll try to explain this. So the two policies, I understand clearly protect, or intend to reimburse in the event of accidents, something that wasn't planned certainly. But I came across a provision that said that the subcontractors of the contractor and the applicant have to be in compliance with, I suppose, the requirements of this document and then the contractor has to confirm that compliance. And if there's any question about whether the subcontractor or the contractor complied, is that something that the insurance company will use to void the insurance contract? And I guess what, I was asking myself, well typically, the city and the, and maybe the neighboring residents would be listed as additional insured and would recover in any event if there was some sort of damage. But in this case, you know, if they allege that one or more of the parties wasn't in compliance, that seems to be an out for the insurance company. So that's my question, one of my questions.
Great question, especially since there might be insurance that the city will need to verify subcontractors have. Typically, when insurance is provided to the city and the city to be satisfied insurance is present, will get a certificate showing the insurance coverage and then endorsements which have anything extra, which in this case would be that the city's an additional insured. So for the project actually move forward, the city would need to be satisfied that all the certificates and endorsements are provided. And so if the contractor is going to be using subcontractors and is not going to have insurance for them, then they're going to be retired to turn in certificates or endorsements. So basically, the city will be looking at paperwork to make sure that, you know, the insurance is present. If that answers your question?
Well, I was thinking of a specific example, again, I'm hoping this probably unlikely that it would happen, but say one or more of the trucks using the roads is over the maximum weight and it produces some cracking to the foundation or walls of some of the nearby residents. And now they want to be reimbursed vis a vis of the insurance, could the insurance company say, "Well, I'm sorry, the subcontractor wasn't in compliance with the requirements of this document and the contract with respect to that subcontractor is void, we aren't going to honor it."
Well, it seems that that's a risk that any project has, that I guess you're speculating, could insurance fraud occur? It could occur in this project, it could occur in any project. But whether or not the insurance coverage is there is based upon the city seeing documents showing that there's coverage. If there's a concern about subcontractors not being properly insured, again, that would be something that the contractor, the general contractor, should let the city know who the subcontractors are and then we should know whether they're covered by the general contractor's insurance or we have proof of subcontractor insurance, if that makes sense.
Well, I don't want to belabor the point and I won't. I guess I'm getting to, under what circumstances would the insurer be able to say, "I'm not responsible for that unfortunate event?" Because it's not fraud, he was ensuring, he was ensuring the situation in which everyone followed the requirements of this mitigated negative declaration, rather, everyone was to follow the requirements of this and somebody didn't and some damage occurred. And I'm asking, in that case, is the insurer still on the hook to be responsible for reimbursement? It's not fraud, but you know.
Sure. Honestly, without having a specific claim to look at, I can't say under just broadly any circumstances whether the insurance would or wouldn't apply. We do have from the applicant agreement to get extra insurance, a $5 million general liability policy that's going to cover the city as an additional insured. Previously, there was the standard requirement of what we call 2 million, 1 million insurance and so they've added to that a $5 million policy. And that is supposed to name the city, which means the city can tender a claim if there's an issue. I can't really speculate just broadly on an undefined claim, whether the insurance would cover it or not.
And then, let's see, with respect to the requirements to mitigate the noise, various levels of noise, the city engineer will periodically inspect the work site is what I think I saw in the document.
I think we plan on having the city inspect the work site, but they won't be responsible for the noise monitoring. We will provide all monitoring, we will insist that all monitoring reports are provided to the city on a timely basis so that we can monitor it and I think we have the right to visit the site and make sure that things are being monitored.
Okay. That clarifies that point. And then my last question. At this point, there will only be a sort of, and I'm not quite sure what that means, but there will be noise monitoring if, let's see, if there are complaints?
I think at the last hearing and Michael, Tiffany is here, so he probably can review that again, but I think that he had talked about making sure that they have monitors at the area of the work, monitoring the noise, and if it reaches a certain level, then they will stop action and go and make sure that the noise monitors are activated.
Okay.
And just going back to your insurance question, the applicant is required to provide the $5 million all risk, which is an umbrella policy, and the applicant is naming the city as additional insured. The contractors and the subcontractors are contracted through the applicant. So I think that the insurance would go after the applicant and the applicant, if there was some insurance issue with any of the subs, that would be his responsibility to resolve with the subs.
Jesse, do you have any questions? Richard?
Yeah, regarding the insurance, you mentioned that the city is under that umbrella as well. Previously in these meetings, I stated that we should televise the sewer lines in the streets and the traffic areas that are to be used, especially with the fact that those streets don't have much base, it's pretty much asphalt on dirt. And has the city made a plan to televise these lines prior to the construction and So we can have some kind of like baseline?
No. And were the city to require that, were we to do that, and we found issues with the lines, the individual property owners would be required to fix them.
Sewer mains?
The sewer, oh, sewer main, I think we probably have been doing the sewer mains, I thought you were talking about the laterals.
No, I'm talking about the sewer mains. I understand that the laterals where they connect, but if you pushed out a sewer main, you can't blame the people that are connected to it. You know what I'm saying, Scott? And that road is, there's no base there, basically. So there's a concern there of that, especially with our history with our maintenance on those areas. So I was wondering if the city is getting a baseline on that and have that under that insurance umbrella.
We did, in the last public hearing, there was an expert here that spoke to road surface and road construction in that area and he said that anything, any utility that's below two or three feet would not be affected by a regulation weight truck driving on the street. two or three feet would not be affected by a regulation weight truck driving on the street.
With all due respect, I'm an expert in sewer collection infrastructure, and I would say that that is a concern that, as a city, that needs to protect their infrastructure.
Can we keep this to questions right now? We'll get into.
Well, that's what I want to state, is that I think that it's a concern.
Okay, great, thank you. I just have a, I guess, question on ownership of the property, and do we have, do we have a LLC in ownership, or do we have, you know, and do we have personal liability attached for anything over the insured value for any damage or complaints above the insured values?
In regards to personal liability, this issue had come up before, I know, and the way that it was addressed was to get the $5 million policy, but no, there won't be personal liability, that's the whole purpose of having an LLC or a corporation. And the city would legally be in, would be in an exposed position if they were to require any applicant to be personally liable when they're able to offer insurance and a performance agreement and bonds.
Okay, thank you. At this point, we'll open up for public comment. We typically have the applicant come forward first. And so, do we have a representative from the applicant?
Honorable Commissioners, my name is Chris Matisse, I represent the applicant. Appreciate you taking the time to listen to our testimonies today. I would like to introduce to you our panel, basically, that are here today to answer all your questions. The lead presentator is going to be Michael Tiffany. Michael, if you'd like to come up. Michael is a, what's called, industrial hygienist. He has been removing fuel tanks for the last 30 years, some larger and some smaller, and he has a finite experience and knowledge in the process. And he will be on the project from the day it starts to the day it ends. And they're full-time, not only to make sure the work gets done to your satisfaction, but also to make sure that if there are concerns from the neighbors, that he will be there on-site to address those concerns. We also have today, Mr. Oliver Reese, who is with Bedford Enterprises. They will be the lead contractor responsible for removing the tanks. They also have a very long history of removing metal structures above ground structures and tanks. Mr. Reese will be available for your questioning today. And then, we have Mr. Jeff Reed, who is going to also be available to address any legal concerns you have as far as liability goes, and Mr. Reed is here as well. So, you'll have several individuals that are at your disposal to ask any questions that might come up. Wanted to just address a couple of the main issues that were a concern of yours. Last time we were here, I think the biggest issue was the interference and/or construction. I believe we will not only believe, but there will be no longer any construction at all, any removal in the ESHA period. Nothing will be removed. No one will enter that space, it will be protected during the entire length of the project. And so, we have been able to redesign how that pipeline's going to be abandoned within the ESHA area. All of the work to abandon that pipeline will take place out of the ESHA area. The other big issue was our ability to bond the project and insurance. We have got a commitment from a bonding company to bond or issue a performance bond for two and a half times the entire cost of the project. That bond will be in place and will be there if we do in any way not perform, that bonding company will step in and complete the project. The other big issue was insurance. You're right in wanting to protect the public and the city. As was mentioned, we will have a $5 million policy that will protect the city, the public, anything related to the project, if anything goes wrong. And so, I think those were the three main areas that you had mentioned. You did also mention noise today. We do plan to have someone on the job every day that is educated and trained in noise detection. If we reach levels that exceed the city's requirements, something will be done immediately to either stop that equipment or find equipment that will meet those noise levels. So, again, this is not going to be a project where we're going to have people moving dirt and no one's going to be around, we're going to have full-time monitors there. The other gentleman that I haven't mentioned yet is Brian Dugas, he's also here today, and he is the one that prepared all the biological reports that you requested. He's very experienced in anything to do with environmental issues, how it impacts habitat, surroundings, the public, all of that, and he's also available for your questioning. I can tell you, just from experience, our family put aside a ranch in Fresno County, and we recorded a conservation easement against that property. We could have easily sold it to someone and made a lot more money, but we decided it was in the public's best interest to make sure that ranch never got developed. And that ranch will never be developed, it will always be in cattle for my life and for the perpetuity of the property. And so, the last thing we want to do is do anything that's going to impact the environment, the species that are on the property. Me personally, it's a concern of mine that we don't cause any harm at all. And so, I just want to give you my personal assurance that Mr. Dugas and his experts are going to make sure that the environment's protected. With that, I'd like to start by introducing Mr. Michael Tiffany, who is the industrial hygienist. He will give you an overall presentation of the project, and from there, we are available for questioning. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
My name's Michael Tiffany, I'm a certified industrial hygienist and a California registered professional geologist. I've been working in environmental analysis, assessment, remediation for 38 years, my entire career. This project is fairly typical of the types of projects that I manage and oversee on a regular basis. We've done a lot of projects in urban areas adjacent to schools, adjacent to hospitals, daycare centers, residences, some very heavy-duty contaminated sites, plating shops, solvent We did a project a couple of years ago in Pacific Palisades, cleaning up soil contaminated with tetrachlorethylene, dry cleaning solvent, in a residential area, monitoring solvent vapors and dust with the residents of Pacific Palisades adjacent to the property, under regulation by County of LA and South Coast Air Quality Management District. We set up a system similar to what we'll be setting up on this project. It's the sort of thing I do, excuse me, all the time. With respect to noise monitoring, we're going to have noise monitoring instruments operating continuously on the fence line, on the perimeter of the property. We will be looking at those monitors daily and publishing the noise levels that we found during the day, and if we exceed the noise level regulations, then I will have the contractor change his activities in order to stay in compliance. The same applies to dust, in accordance with the APCD and California Air Resources Board regulations for dust on a project like this. We're doing visual monitoring of dust emissions and also have dust collection instruments on the perimeter of the property, so we'll be able to provide numeric data on a daily basis of dust crossing the property line. During the demolition, we're also going to be monitoring for lead and asbestos emissions on a daily basis, collecting air samples for lab analysis. Those take a couple of days to get back from the lab, but they'll be published also. We're setting the dust monitoring standards so that if the dust standard is not exceeded, the lead and asbestos levels will also not be exceeded, so we have real-time information as well as the lab results that come a couple of days later. I or my employees will be on-site every day, and our only task, basically, is to monitor the environmental conditions, oversee the demolition, monitor the procedures that the contractor is using in accordance with the demolition plan, the lead compliance plan, asbestos compliance plan, the dust control plan, and so on, the noise control plan. So, I'm here to answer any questions that you or the public may have regarding the project. Again, this is something, I've been doing tank removal work for actually about 26 years, hundreds of tanks, below-ground tanks, above-ground tanks. In most cases, the tank owners are under orders from the fire department or whatever the COOPA agency is in their jurisdiction to remove those tanks, they don't have a choice. So, when above-ground tanks or underground tanks are out of service, in most cases, they have to be removed promptly, within 90 days typically. So, this project is unusual in that there doesn't seem to be that requirement, but we're doing that pretty much constantly. So, I'm here for whatever questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. We'll have, we'll probably bring you forward, you know, when we have questions after the rest of the public comment.
Sure. Commissioners, hi, my name's Jeff Reed, I'm legal counsel, representing the project applicants, Ryan LP and Moro 94 LLC. I'd like to continue on a little bit of the applicant's presentation if I could, and I'd like to begin, first of all, by trying to, I guess, Chris said I was going to answer questions about liability, I didn't know I was going to do that, but I'm going to go ahead and take a stab at that. I don't pretend to be a insurance coverage expert, my firm has many of those, but, and I'm not going to tell you that insurers don't get imaginative sometimes in trying to deny coverage, they do. But the policy is a general liability policy, so the policy's not ensuring compliance with the mitigated negative declaration or the conditions of approval. The general liability policy is going to be covering claims and damages that occur because of activities associated with the project activities. The fact that they may violate one of the standards, I mean, usually when there's damage, there's been a violation of a legal standard of a duty of care in that instance. So, they're not going to be very successful in trying to deny coverage simply because a element of the project conditions were violated, absent some, you know, maybe, you know, intentional, willful, malicious kind of conducts, but those aren't, I don't think, what you're driving at. There was some discussion about having the neighbors as additional insureds, and normally, the insurance would be covering people who might have some potential liability, not somebody who would be potentially a claimant and benefit. So, you wouldn't want, the city, the city might be potentially, you know, at risk, and so it should be an additional insured, but the neighbors wouldn't be additional insureds. There was a discussion about whether we'd taken videos yet of the roadways, and I think the answer is no. I would think that that should be done probably as reasonably close proximity to the time when the activity's going to be done, so that there's a better framework of what's there now, you know, and so, and we haven't got all of our permits yet, so I think it'd be probably a little bit premature before we, for us to do that. I want to talk a little bit about what this project is not, okay? The project is, there is no pending proposal for any residential development, there's no change being proposed to the existing zoning, there's no land division application being sought, there's no use that is not reliant on the existing zoning that's being approved. I'm sorry, that is reliant upon the existing zoning that's being approved. What we have is a tank removal project of an abandoned tank facility. And tank removals are routinely conducted and treated as important remediation activities, and they're not treated as site preparation activities. Usually, in fact, it's the government mandating, you know, that they get done because they're considered important to, for the public interest. Here, the tank removals being conducted on lands that the city previously, without any application by the current owner or its predecessor, zoned the property for residential uses, consistent with the city's 1997 general plan. Now, the project opponents are trying to use that longstanding existing zoning designation as a tool to block the demolition activities, claiming that a future residential use of the project must now be proposed so that it can be environmentally evaluated, so that an EIR, an additional conditions, can be potentially imposed, on the basis that to not do so now is impermissible piecemealing under California Environmental Quality Act. And that's just simply not the law. There's been a lot of discussions that probably in the paperwork you've seen, and you'll hear some more, I'm sure, later, about the seminal decision of Laurel Heights Improvement Association versus the Regents of UC California, California Supreme Court case. And it held that environmental evaluations of an activity should not be submerged by chopping a project into little, many little ones that might then have minimal environmental impact. But they also gave deference to the fact that a premature environmental analysis may be meaningless and financially wasteful. So, they adopted a legal standard. And it's a legal standard that, you know, I don't know how many of you may have formal legal training, maybe some of you are experts in the California Environmental Quality Act, but if you're not, you're going to probably get a little tired of some of the legal arguments you're going to be hearing, both from me and others. But we need to spend a little time talking about those standards, because that seems to be a primary focus now of the current efforts, now that we've done exhaustive evaluations of all the potential impacts and mitigations. And the court said that a piecemealing exists only if two factors are both satisfied, that the other action is reasonably foreseeable consequence of the initial project, and that the future expansion or action is significant in that it will likely change the scope or nature of the initial project or its environmental impacts, both of those two standards. So, absent either of those two, a future potential action should not be considered in the evaluation of the environmental impacts of the proposed project. So, we have here the removal of a long-unused bliding facilities that are non-conforming in the zoning, and it will not create the consequence of a future residential development of the site. Future residential development will, if it does occur and when it does occur, would be a consequence of the city council's decision decades ago to have this site developed as future residential use, but this demolition is not a consequence of that. In addition, any future residential development project will not change the scope or the nature of the intended removal of the tanks. Now, the standards for remediation may be partially informed by the site's current zoning and by the fact that it's immediately adjacent to existing residential uses. However, those circumstances are part of the existing environmental baseline of where the project is being conducted. They are not the result of a foreseeable future project. Now, courts have sometimes struggled in drawing the line about piecemealing, and some of them have attempted to come up with some other standards of drawing the line and enunciating the standards. One court, Communities for a Better Environment versus City of Richmond, came up with a standard sometimes referred to as a crucial functioning element standard. Now, I'm going to get in the weeds for you here. So, that standard held that piecemealing occurs when a proposed project is a crucial functional element of a larger project, that without it, the larger project cannot proceed. Now, if you just think about that in the abstract, you would think, well, that means it's sort of, if this occurs, this occurs, then, and that has to happen before this happens, then therefore, the two things must always be functionally connected. And that's not how the courts have applied the standard. It's not simply a, because one activity is required before another one. There has to be some requirement that the foreseeable activity that's being omitted from the project description must be functionally linked in some way to the intended project such that it's a consequence of the intended project. So, there's been a couple of cases where the standard was held, where a retail development was conditioned on a road realignment, but the road realignment was not included in the project. But the road realignment was not included in the project description. You can see the two would be functionally related, and those two should be treated environmentally evaluated together. Here, the completion of a residential development is not a functional requirement to complete the jet tank demolition. So there is no functional element linkage and no piecemealing. There was a case that held that a residential project, EIR, that failed to examine expansion of a sewer system—and I know sewer systems are something that's important here—where the sewer system expansion was necessary for that project. So there, again, the completion of the residential development required the sewer tank—this sewer system—to be expanded, and they needed to be evaluated together. Here, the completion of a residential development is not a functional requirement to complete a jet fuel tank demolition project. Now, there are several other cases where they determined no crucial functional element linkage and no piecemealing. County was updating its zoning ordinances and had several separate ordinances. They were separating—they were evaluating them separately, tried to argue that they should have all been evaluated together, and the court held that each of them served a different purpose and could be implemented independently, and therefore there was no piecemealing. There was a project where two—a hydrogen plant was being conducted or evaluated at the same time that a pipeline that would be able to transport excess hydrogen from that plant was being evaluated, and the court held that they could be treated as separate projects because the new hydrogen plant did not depend upon construction of the pipeline. There was no piecemealing when a landfill project required the support from a material services recovery facilities that would be newly developed at then unknown locations that weren't included in the project description. And the court held that those material recovery facilities needed to be developed regardless of whether there was this landfill development, and therefore there was no piecemealing. There was no piecemealing when an airport development plan evaluated—evaluation did not include a potential runway addition in its project description. The court held that that future development of a runway was entirely speculative, and it was only a gleam in a planner's eye. No piecemealing. Here, jet fuel tanks can be demolished without the completion of residential development. The residential development activities that are being omitted in the project description that are being complained of are not an essential function of the demolition activities. A future residential development project remains entirely speculative and a gleam in a planner's eyes. There is discussion that somehow your approval of this is going to be a pre-commitment to a future residential project. Well, any pre-commitment to the future residential project was the fact that the city previously, without any application by the owners, zoned the property for residential uses. That's the pre-commitment. Your actions to allow demolition is not a pre-commitment to something that's not otherwise been already previously environmentally evaluated, and when there's a future application for a future project that has some better definiteness, that project can be fully environmentally evaluated, and nothing that you do here today to allow this demolition project will limit your ability to effectively mitigate and implement conditions of approval for any future residential development, consistent with your existing zoning, should in fact such a project be implemented. Thank you.
Okay.
I would like to possibly provide some rebuttal, because I know there's going to be a lot of legal argument, so with your permission.
We'll have—at the end of public comment, we'll have questions for you. So at this point, do we have members from the public that would wish to speak? And if you could please line up, you know, to the side there so that we can do so in an orderly manner, please state your name and—
Good evening, honorable commissioners, staff. My name's Kristin Headland, 28-years, North Moro Bay. I've been involved with this project from the beginning, which is August of 2016. This project requires an environmental impact report under SEQA. According to the California Supreme Court, since the preparation of an EIR is the key to environmental protection under SEQA, accomplishment of this high objective of that which requires the preparation of an EIR whenever it is fairly argued on the basis of the substantial evidence that the project may have significant environmental impacts. In this case, the city's own initial study mitigated negative declarations shows that the land in question was used for storage of a pipeline transporting jet fuel and is currently a U.S. EPA Superfund Site. The land is presumed to be contaminated with petroleum hydrocarbons. In 1996, reports indicated hydrocarbons and benzene in the soil in groundwater samples. In 1997, the California Department of Toxic Substance Control acknowledged, quote, "that when the site is converted to residential use, it should be reassessed for the presence of contaminants and the need for additional remediation," unquote. This substantial evidence in the record provides a fair argument that excavation and disturbance of the soil on this site may have a significant effect on the environment, including air quality, water control, water quality, and an EIR is required. Even if the project could legally be segmented to allow permitting and demolition of above and below-ground structures in isolation of the whole project—which it cannot, an EIR would be required based on the evidence of the record. Under the California Quality Control Act, piecemealing occurs when the development project is divided into two or more parts for environmental review and for the possible environmental effects. Harm caused to people or the environment are identified and analyzed separately. The effect is to evade disclosure and analysis of the cumulative effect of the whole project. SEQA prohibits piecemealing and requires identification and analysis of the environmental effect of the whole project. In summary, the environmental review of the site preparation must conclude a discussion of the effects of the residential development to satisfy SEQA requirements. Two, clearing the site will induce growth, and the city is required under SEQA to evaluate the environmental effects of the most probable development patterns. Third, site preparation includes demolition is routinely reviewed as part of the whole project by the City of Moro Bay. Piecemealing risks pre-commitment to the next phase of the project and the loss of open-minded decision-making. The negative declaration in Resolution 1518 should not be adopted until an EIR is completed. I have more I'd like to say, but my time is up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. Thank you very much, sirs. My name is Ed Griggs. I'm at 539 Whidby Street, right across the street. It's right in my front yard. Dear Sears, On October 17, 2016, an onsite meeting, Kristin Headland asked Mr. Matisse what he planned to do with the site after the tanks were removed. I brought a video to show you his comments and her question, but I'm told that they can't reproduce sound on here. They could show the videotape, but you wouldn't be able to hear it. So I'll tell you that Mr. Matisse responded with, "No, we're not going to develop that. That's not our job. We're not contractors." And I have it on tape. I looked up his record. Matisse is licensed—is a licensed contractor in the state of California. His license number is 454689. The license was established in 1984, and it expires in next year, in 2019, and is currently active. So he didn't tell the truth about his being a contractor, because that was his reason for not developing the site. Why did Mr. Matisse say that we are not contractors when in fact—when the facts show that he is? Because the piecemealing issue hinges on whether or not he intends to build on the site after the tanks come down. I believe that the project is being piecemealed. The mitigated negative declaration is invalid because an environmental impact report is required for this project from front to back. After an exhaustive search of the EPA website, the National Environmental Policy Act, and a nationwide search of EIR reports on contaminated superfund sites formerly operated by the U.S. military, I could not find a single case in which a superfund site, either on the national priority list or on the non-national priority list, was converted to residential use without an EIR. The only way to challenge a determination that a mitigated negative declaration is adequate is to take legal action, which us neighbors are hardly in a position to do. So the people that are responsible for knowing SEQA say that this MND is adequate. That's one thing. The lawyers can argue all day long, but I'm finishing up. At this point in time, the Planning Commission is our only hope of seeing this project done properly to protect the health and welfare of our neighborhood. You are our Robert Mueller, protecting the rule of law in our own front yards. Please—
Thank you very much. If you have further testimony, if you could give a copy to staff.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Alan Belt. I live at 499 Whidby Way, fronting on Panorama and for identification, where the goats used to be kept is right across the street from us. I have spent my entire career with the feds and the county, working on environmental issues, and I apologize, I do not know much about SEQA at this point. I was in Arizona and Colorado. But I do question why I didn't see—or did I just miss it—the fact that when an approval is given, there needs to be a set definitive date after 90 days, three months, that they will be completed with the project, so it doesn't linger on and on, and having either the performance bond or whatever used to use as punitive measures if they do not meet that. Secondly, I'm not sure why the environmentally sensitive area—it was mentioned somewhere —as no permanent structures would be built on it. I heard the engineer clarify that. I think I'm okay with that now, but I wondered why the thought of permanent structures being built on it was even bought up. The county oversight issue that you brought up is new to me. We always had an interface zone where the county reviewed the city's plans, but in this case, does the county planning commission—county commissioners—review the city's That's just a question. I don't know. I heard one of you mention that. Okay. And I know now who's monitoring the noise levels. I haven't seen anything specific like decibel levels or sustained periods of time. I know that there are hours of operation in there, but living across the street now, I find myself on the other side of the disc, and I'm asking you folks just to do the very best you can in a fair manner, which I'm sure you will try to do. Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much. Next, please.
Good evening, honorable members of the Planning Commission. My name is Bill Alpert. I'm a Moro Bay resident, about one block from the proposed development. For me, Panorama is a project that explores the unknown. For example, and though the experts are here today, in truth and with all due respect, we don't really know exactly what impact this project will have on the fragile ecosystems in our own backyard, but we do know for certain that Moro Bay has precious few areas like this. We know that site preparation, including demolition, is routinely reviewed as part of the whole project by the City of Moro Bay, yet we don't know why the Assistant City Attorney has interpreted case law in a way that is counterintuitive to just plain common sense and sound planning practice. We think we know, but we're not certain what's in the soil. So we don't know what will turn up if an equipment operator accidentally misreads an excavation plan and makes a wrong turn. Further, we don't know if city staff will be on hand in that moment when critical decisions are being made in the field. But we do know that the city and its residents will be held—left holding the bag if something goes wrong in the superfund site, and $5 million could conceivably be a single claim, the way things go today. We do know that this project is one that demands great attention to detail and a proactive attitude to avoid problems, yet we don't know if the applicant will display such an attitude. But we do know that a herd of goats languished in starvation conditions and neglect for years under the applicant's care. We do know that the project site was chest-high in weeds just three days ago, weeks past the deadline for fire suppression. I would gratefully ask the dedicated members of our Planning Commission to continue in their sincere dedication to protecting the environment, the Moro Bay's citizenry, and Moro Bay's financial future. Let us approve Panorama if and when we fully understand the ultimate use of this parcel, rather than commit ourselves to a path that leads to the unknown. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you very much. Next, please. And we will try to have your questions answered by staff or by the applicant.
Good evening, honorable commissioners. I'm Annie Pavariskey, full-time resident and homeowner on Yerba Buena Street. I live next door to Bill Albert, so we are a block away from this site. I believe you are being misguided by city staff, including the city attorney regarding this project, who in turn are being manipulated by the applicant and the various LPs and LLCs referred to in numerous documents involving this project. Why does city staff continue to push the tank demolition and associated structures of this site as a standalone project? SEQA requires environmental review of the whole project and prohibits segmented or piecemealed environmental review of project impacts. The city routinely conducts permitting and environmental review of whole projects with site preparation as an element of development. Why is a full EIR being dismissed? An environmental review that includes the impacts of, quote, "grading, earthwork, or demolition" included in the 2016 environmental review of application for construction of a new restaurant on Main Street is worthy of environmental review, and the demolition of tanks at a superfund site in an area zoned for residential use is not? If not for future residential development, why would these tanks be taken down? Because the owners are altruistic and wish only to contribute to the beauty of a community where they don't reside? The city staff report identifies the applicant as Chris Matisse, agent for owners Rhine LP and CVI Group LLC. The application and MND state the owners as Rhine LP and Moro 94 LLC with Chris Matisse as agent applicant, and the address is listed for all at 2304 West Shaw Avenue, number 102 Fresno 93771. The owner applicants identified on the grant deed, recorded with Sloane County Recorder and Clerk on February 15, 2018, is signed by Rob Solley as manager of CVI Group LLC, as co-tenants of CVI Group LLC, aka CVI Group LLP, and Moro 94 LLC. The address for Moro 94 is 2141 Twalumney Street, J., Suite J., Fresno 93721. The correct ownership of the property must be provided for liability purposes. The correct applicant must be identified in order to enforce this decision, and the correct applicant property owner must be identified for service of process, as required by SEQA in the event that litigation under SEQA against the city— by CEQA in the event that litigation under CEQA against the city results from the city's decision. This is a contradiction in the documents that must be corrected. These are some examples of why this project should not be approved tonight, and I urge you to recommend a full EIR be completed before the tanks are taken down. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Dan Sudley, and I am a Morro Bay city resident. Planning Commission, staff, and public audience, I wish to cover three points tonight if I do not get through all of them. My first and foremost point is that the city owes it to its citizenry and the environment to conduct a comprehensive EIR, environmental impact report, largely due to the fact that this is a superfund site as designated by the EPA, and that is a current designation, due to asbestos, lead-based paint, benzene fuel, jet fuel that's been found within that site. The applicant truly does not know what they're going to find until they get there. They don't know. This is Pandora's box. They've conducted some samples, but when they get in there, they're subject to find a whole lot. So I think based on the environmental issues that are there on site, the red-legged frogs, all of it, the trees, based on, and my issue is primarily the citizens of Morro Bay. I want them to be healthy. I want the receptive sensors, I believe they're called then, the MND, to be protected, the children 14 and under and the people over 65. I believe that we owe it to them to conduct a full-blown and comprehensive environmental impact report. Otherwise, I do not believe that the citizens of this great city will be protected, health-wise. In regards to the applicant's statement in the MND that they have no intent to develop, they have no plans to develop at the current time, that's a simple one. Wow, just wow. Have the applicant sign a legal MOU saying they have no intent to develop this site? Make that real easy. But there's confusion. I hear the applicant saying, "Well, I don't have any intent," but I hear his staff talking about residential use. I'm confused. They seem to be all over the map on this subject. It's simple. Put it in writing. Don't play us. Third, the MND does not adequately protect the citizenry and the environment. Subject that, I've read the entire 99 pages. For example, the trucks. We saw the pictures of the trucks. They're open-ended trucks. They talk about throwing tarps over them. So we put this dirt, this soil, this contaminated with these contaminated materials, we throw it in there, and we throw a tarp over it. That's their plan. It's in the MND, if you haven't read it. Have any of us traveled behind these trucks with tarps and seen materials blowing out the back, specifically dust? I have. I have. Shouldn't these materials be in a sealed vehicle? That there is no potential for this dust to be affecting and being inhaled by our citizens? Conduct an EIR. Protect our citizens, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, please.
My name is Sean McCaffrey. I'm 27 years old, and I have a new house at 442 Sisley Street. I'm usually quality control, quality assurance for these kind of projects also, and I've just bought the house back in town, thinking I'm moving back to a great city. My question is, with the quality assurance they have, isn't there a conflict of interest if we don't know what is there, they start digging deep to just miss it and to not have to deal with it because it's affecting his money line? The guy paying him money, he doesn't want to find anything more. In my instance, I've gotten fired for something like this. You don't want to bite the hand that feeds you. Second is, whoever's in charge, how do we get a hold of them? What is the response time for a complaint? Are they able to continue work while our complaint is being investigated? If the complaint issue is not answered or a non-compliance is seen, is there fines? And the fines, who do they go to? Where's the money going to go to? To the affected citizens, to the general fund, or back to the site? Traveling up Sisley Street, 442, you guys say you guys have an 84 PCI rating, which is the city's street valuation, I guess. As of right now, in front of my house, we have huge mounds. I'm afraid big trucks are going to come through. Something's going to happen to my water line that I'm responsible for. Is that insurance going to cover me for them traveling through my road? I can't afford that. I'm trying to live the American dream, coming back home. I can't afford that. I would be out of my house if I don't have water. And then, there's contaminated soil up there. I know these guys are professionals. They're probably going to travel the stuff back and forth in a professional manner. But if I see something, as a citizen, and my niece there, if I see dust coming off the truck, do I have the assumption that is contaminated? Do I have to get my niece out of the way? What do we have here? They say that they're going to wash the trucks down, just the tires. Is that enough? I don't know. And finally, the noise. They say the noise, they're going to evaluate it one time a day. Now, are they going to do that at the beginning of the day, end of the day, when they're doing their constructions? They said they evaluated with their machinery on site. Was the machinery actually jackhammering the concrete, which is the noisiest part of the operation, or was it just running? Cutting down their pipes, basically when you see a bear, when you hit a pot, it is very loud. Were they hitting that tank? I've been part of tank construction. It is deafening loud. I just want them to perform it in a reasonable manner, best we can. I want them to do it within a timeframe that we all know about, so I don't have people coming to my house and dealing with this, and the Airbnbs next to me don't have people coming to rent their places and getting bad reviews, bringing in money to the city with this noise going on. And last thing, how far is foreseeable future? Is that five years? Is that 10 years? Is that one year? What are we looking at? I know the city, they don't plan on building. I know if we accept this proposal, it is not going to give them approval to build, but I think this is our only bargaining chip we have left to make sure that they do it correctly, is that we make them get a full EIR. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Good evening. Barry Brannan, citizen of Morro Bay. In my previous life, I installed fuel tanks for oil companies, and I have a hazardous waste removal for petroleum. And back then, we started out hauling all this stuff to Casamalia. Finally, they said, "Hey, you can't do that anymore. You have to do all of your remediation on site." All of that has to be remediated on site. And I don't see anything in this report where any petrochemicals that they find will be remediated on site, and that's a tremendous difference than hauling it off. So I can't understand why that's not specifically stated. If it's in there and I missed it, please excuse me. The second thing that's really important is that street. I happen to live on the other end of Sisley, and I can't imagine running multi-wheel trucks up and down that street, what it's going to do to it. But the only way to find out if you have a damage is, appears that you should have an engineering report, separate pavement report, for the entire length of that street, and you should designate, because there's some areas that are better than others. But you want to know when this thing is over, that it will be back to at least equal to what it is now. And without a baseline study of the paving, all the way from where it comes out of the Panorama site, clear down to Main Street, that street's not going to take it. The trash trucks beat it up pretty bad, and they're not nearly as heavy as what this stuff's going to be. So without an engineering report, I think that you're opening yourself up just to monstrous headaches, and I think that needs to be established. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, please.
My name's Eric Four, and I live on Zanzibar Street. I've lived there since 1988. That's 30 years. When I first lived there, the jet fuel tanks were still being used. If I didn't flush my toilet in about 24 hours, there would be a sheen of oil formed on my toilet bowl. Those tanks have been leaking for a long, long time, and I just wanted to point this out, that this woman that just left, apparently, seemed to say, the latest report showed that there was no indication of leakage, or perhaps some. Well, I live not right next door to them and slightly uphill, but I've actually experienced something that had to do with those tanks because that sheen stopped when they stopped using those oil tanks. Secondly, I wanted to also comment on this fact of, apparently, the city's concerned about their sewer mains and taking pictures before and after, and then when it was pointed out that the laterals are the community's responsibility, I just about dropped it. I mean, you're proposing a project and that whole street, everybody on that street, including this man that just spoke here, said, you know, "If my lateral breaks, I'm responsible for it." And this lawyer over here said that. He said that an hour ago. He said, "It's our responsibility." What's going on here? Our responsibility? That's not right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
I don't live in that end of town, but I have many friends who live up there, and I go up there on occasion. I first want to say thank you for the commitment on the part of the developer to not affect the Escha. And I had brought some pictures of this tonight to show you about, because your report does not say that they have seen birds of concern and other things other than the red-legged frog up there. But these are pictures that are taken in those trees on that property over the last two years. So those kinds of animals do need protection up there. Before I get into my other comments, I want to say that, so you do not violate the Brown Act tonight, you need to read the Coastal Commission letter that was given to you, because anything new that is presented to you and not to the public is a violation. And so I would like for you to read that Coastal Commission letter tonight, and you already reported the facts of that other study, so that was helpful. Thank you. And thank you for clarifying the grading, because in the report, it says that grading will happen when the seeding is done, and tonight you're saying grading's only going to happen where the two roads are going to happen. So I hope that that's true. The air pollution, think about the truckloads, it's 131, and in your MND, it says that those are merely for removal of the concrete and the metal, and yet, we're talking about hydrocarbons in the soil, and we don't know how many truckloads that's going to be. So to say that there's 131 truckloads is a minimum, and we don't know how many more there will be beyond that, because I think it's assumed that we're going to find pollution in there. And will that be remediated on site? As Mr. Brannan said, I don't know. Will that be taken somewhere else? I don't know. But I think that question needs to be answered. Also, it says that the big trucks will come in on Tahiti, and that the pickup trucks that the workers are going to drive are going to come in on Sicily, and yet, if you've gone to the site, which I assume you have, to see, that the tanks are up on top, which is the road in by Sicily. So how are they going to haul everything off the top, which is like several stories high, and down to below, and then load the trucks? Or will they drive the trucks up there? I think that's a piece that needs to be identified and delineated and solved. In our LUC policy, it says that buffering setbacks should be a minimum of 100 feet from sensitive habitat areas. The one that's quoted in the document says that it can be 100 feet for non-urban and 50 feet for urban. I think you need to decide, as I mentioned to you in my email today, whether or not this is urban or not urban, but this statement at the 11.06 is even saying it should be 100, no matter what. And then my last comment is, I agree with all the neighbors that, why would you take down a superfund site if you're not going to develop it? That's just common sense, doesn't make any reasoning, so please, at least allow for the last piece, the housing development on your MND, if you're not going to do the EIR. Thank you.
Okay. Next, please.
Good evening, Commissioner. Tina Metzger, Morro Bay. The concerns of the citizens that have spoken previously have very valid concerns, and there are a few that I want to ask myself. First of all, who are the human owners of this site? We only get an LP and an LLC name, and so again, who are the human owners of this site? Just to protect the city, the city of Morro Bay should require the videotaping of the pre-demolition condition of the sewer main and the water main of the proposed truck route, just to establish the condition, and then also a post-demolition videotape of the condition of the truck route of the water main and the sewer mains. Having walked those neighborhoods personally, it's obvious that there is very little base material underneath the street, and there is a possibility, a great possibility, that the pipes could be damaged with the heavy trucks. Also, I'd like to know who on city staff will be responsible for tracking, the monitoring, and who on city staff will be the liaison for neighbors if there are any problems? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, please. Do we have any further comment from the public? Okay. Let me go through a few of the questions that I caught, and I'll direct them to staff, but if the applicant is better suited to answer them, then I'll request the applicant come forward. So, staff, why MND instead of an EIR?
I'd actually like Jacqueline McCory to come up and talk about EIR versus MND, and what the process is, and what the timeframe is, and what the result is.
Great.
Hi. I am with SWCA Environmental Consultants and one of the primary authors of the MND. Just to talk a little bit about the difference between an MND and an EIR. An EIR would only be triggered if there was a potential impact that could not be mitigated to be less than significant. So for this MND, we are only looking at the proposed project, which, for me, I know of no future use for the site, so I'm just looking at the proposed demolition and removal of the infrastructure located on the site. And the impacts associated with the proposed project that we identified, we found could be appropriately minimized through the implementation of mitigation measures to be less than significant. So that's why we found the MND to be the appropriate level of environmental review for this project. If, however, we had found a potential impact, for example, let's say through Calimod modeling to identify air emissions, if we found that emissions were going to exceed APCD thresholds and could not be reasonably mitigated to be less than significant, that would trigger us into an EIR territory. We would need to do that additional level of environmental review and potentially have a significant and unavoidable impact. In this case, we did not find that to be the case for this project as we understand it today. So that's kind of the difference. And yeah.
Okay. If future contaminants are found on site after the tanks are removed, could that trigger an EIR? could that trigger an EIR?
No, because we have found, we've identified the potential for contaminants located onsite and we have measures to address that. So inadvertent discovery of contaminated soils, we're requiring soil testing onsite. And we have measures to address that, which we believe will reduce that potential impact to be less than significant. So we feel that mitigation is sufficient to address that impact.
Okay, there was further testing that was not supervised by the city? And where they, my understanding is they penetrated the tanks and soil-tested underneath the tanks through borings? There was contaminants found at that point? Were, was the testing done, was that monitored by the city? Or was that monitored by the county or the Air Quality Control Board?
No, it was the applicant's own testing. And it did not change the county's future testing requirements during the job.
But did it change the level of contamination that would trigger a EIR?
No. And we just received the report. Michael Tiffany can talk more about it.
So could you come forward, Michael, and talk about that, please? So what was found? Why did you do the testing without monitoring from either the city, the county, or the state?
The testing was requested, as I understand it, by you or by the comments requested, the public comments. I contacted Slow County Environmental Health. In fact, I sent them a work plan. And they said that they would not review a work plan for that work because they were requiring post-removal testing. A work plan for the post-removal testing has been reviewed by them. And that's the testing they want to see. You cannot adequately assess the subsurface conditions with those tanks in place and the pump pad and the other facilities. Slant drilling was suggested by somebody. Slant drilling is not feasible in this case. It's one thing to do horizontal drilling for utility installation, but you can't recover soil samples properly. That way, the hollow stem auger equipment that's used for soil sampling has a maximum inclination of 30 degrees, which means 70 feet in at the center of the tank, you're 140 feet down and bedrock is around 40 or 50 feet. So you can't get under the center of the tanks. You can't look at the shallow soil immediately below the tanks. We did the best we could going inside the tanks, cutting holes in the bottom and hand drilling to eight or nine feet to see if there's any sign of release immediately under the tank. The original Navy as-built drawings for the tank indicate a six-inch layer of oiled sand. I believe they specify oiled sand because it helps to protect the steel of the tank bottom. So we knew that that is there, that was intentionally put there by the Navy. It's heavy oil. That stuff is still there. It's degraded somewhat. The concentrations in that sand are less than what's been found elsewhere on the site by the previous investigations done by the Navy. We know that there's up to, if I remember correctly, around 20,000 ppm of contamination that's apparently from spills and leaks during the operation of the facility. We did not see that kind of contamination beneath the tanks. Based on my observations of the tanks and the sampling that we did, there hasn't been any leaks from the tanks themselves. There's apparently been leaks from piping, valves, pumps, spills during operation, that sort of thing, that's been previously assessed. I should point out that the site is not a superfund site, never has been. As far as I know, there's been no federal EPA involvement at all. DTSC assessed it as a military facility. And it's been delisted as no further action by DTSC. So DTSC has no interest in the site at this point. The tanks are regulated by County Environmental Health. And we had an approved permit for closure, including the soil sampling. I believe that's expired and will have to reapply. But like I said, they've already approved the work plan for the removal and the subsequent sampling.
As we were talking about contaminations, if soil contaminants are found, what would be the remediation process that you would use?
It's like peeling an onion. We have to go in order. So in order to properly assess the current condition of the site, we have to remove the facilities in order to drill and sample that soil. The demolition phase of the site, of the tank closure, will have minimal surface disturbance. The only grading we're doing is cutting through the berms, which we wouldn't expect to be contaminated because they're above the original ground level, above any piping or so on. They're not a place where we'd expect to find spills. But I will be onsite. I've been onsite for a lot of discovery of unexpected tanks and drums and contaminants and so on. And everybody working on this site will have hazardous waste operations training to recognize and mitigate anything in real time that's encountered during picking up of the slabs, breaking up of the slabs and so on. We don't really expect anything when we're cutting through the berms. Also, somebody questioned, how are we going to get the waste over the berms? There's a low spot in the berms at the corner near Sicily Street. It's the original entry point. And we're going to regrade that surface grading, basically to make a truck route into the containment area and then cut a pathway through the center berm so that trucks can get into the northern containment. So everything's going to be internal to the berms. The trucks will go through the southwest corner and then they'll be behind the berms when they're being loaded.
If you find contaminations, you know, onsite, will they be site-remediated if they're hydrocarbons? Or will they be trucked off?
I anticipate, there's two possibilities. On-site remediation would be subsurface remediation. There's various modalities, vapor extraction, biological treatment of the soil underground that's contaminated. The other possibility, if we have near-surface hotspots, small volumes of high concentrations of soil, that would likely be excavated and trucked to a disposal facility. There was a time when they did what was called land farming. You dig the soil up, you put it in piles on the site and you use various treatment methods on the site. That's seldom allowed by APCD anymore. And it takes some period of time and that's not what we would do. Casmalia, of course, has been closed for some time. But petroleum-contaminated soil is not classified as hazardous waste under superfund regulations. It's regulated waste. It's petroleum-contaminated waste. There's millions of tons of it generated in oil fields and other facilities. And there are disposal facilities specifically for petroleum-contaminated soil that we could take that material to in accordance with regulations. No remediation is going to be done until we do the site assessment after removal of the tanks. Then if contamination is found at that point, we make an assessment, is it at a level that requires cleanup? Then we have to give a report to the county. The entire process is under county jurisdiction. So they oversee the removal of the tanks and the site assessment. They review the results of the site assessment and our recommendations, whether remediation is necessary. If remediation is necessary, they direct the applicant to prepare a remediation work plan, which they then have to approve. And once the work plan is approved, then we would do the remediation under their oversight, do the final cleanup sampling and give a final cleanup report to the county for approval. And they can go back and forth until they close the site. They give the final approval for closure.
What is the city's role in oversight of this process?
If soil removal is required or adopted, it's typically grading if it's more than 50 cubic yards. And we have to obtain a grading permit from the city with whatever conditions. Other than that, if city doesn't have a COOPA, a Certified Unified Program Agency, it defaults to the county COOPA. So it's a county issue for the remediation itself. The fact that we're excavating soil could be a city building department permit that would be required. At this point in time, we cannot tell whether soil removal is going to be necessary.
If there's, you know, not visible, but sensory perception of hydrocarbons in the neighborhood, who do the neighbors have to call? And who will answer that complaint? And how long will it take to answer that complaint?
I will. Either myself or one of my employees. I have Ben Regester here. He's an associate industrial hygienist. He and I may take turns being the onsite monitor. One of us will be onsite full-time during the project. And we will be the point of contact for any complaints direct to the owner. We will also respond to any issues brought through the city if people contact the city and you send somebody out. You'll talk to me. I will also have hydrocarbon monitors on the fence line. So I'll be able to provide numeric data on volatile organic compounds. There are odor compounds that are not detected by those instruments, but those are generally not harmful compounds. We'll be able to provide you the total volatile organic compound concentration at any point in time. Those are data logs, so we can give you a chart minute by minute through the day of VOC concentrations at three points on the fence line. I'll spend my time on the ground overseeing the contractor. So if I see something, I'm not going to wait for the instrument alarm to go off. I'm going to direct the contractor to mitigate it. You know, if the excavator runs over, I use the term excavator. The machines that are going to cut the tanks are excavators, but they're not going to be excavating. They'll have hydraulic shears to cut the tanks. But if somebody's tracking over the site and picks up some kind of suspicious material, I can see it, I can assess it, I can use the field instruments to assess it. I can take samples to the lab and determine what has to be done.
Is lead contamination monitored with, you know, throughout the process?
Yes. Ben and I are both state-certified lead inspectors. I have 30-plus years of experience in lead testing. We have protocols for dealing with the lead-based paint and cleaning up after the project. The soil will be tested at the end of the project for lead, among other things. I'm going to be running samplers on the fence line. Those samples have to go to the lab. There isn't a direct reading instrument that can do that. But we are monitoring the total dust levels on the fence line. And then, two days later, we'll get the lead testing results. We recently completed a project for Patagonia World Headquarters in Ventura where they demolished a building that had lead paint and asbestos adjacent to their daycare center play area. And we were there daily monitoring to protect the children of the Patagonia employees there. That was a pretty successful project. So you can ask them about that.
Let me ask you, you know, I'm not trying to be offensive or coercive, but how does a community know that you're an independent agent seeing as you're being paid by the contractor?
If you want to arrange it so that the city is paying me, I'm fine with that. I think it'll work either way for the applicant. You can hire somebody to review my work.
Do you have licenses on the line?
I have licenses on the line. I'm a California-registered professional geologist, which basically means when I sign reports as a geologist, I'm acting as an agent of the state. And that license is on the line if complaints are brought against it. I'm a certified industrial hygienist from the American Board of Industrial Hygiene. They have an ethics, what do we call it? The code of ethics, which I submitted to her earlier. And that license is also at stake. I'm also a certified asbestos consultant and certified lead inspector with the state of California. So all those licenses are on the line, just with an engineer or a lawyer or doctor, whatever. Again, I've been doing this, tanks specifically, for more than 27 years, 26 years. The same kind of thing. I'm usually working for the contractor, for the owner, but reporting to the COOPA, be it state or county or city authorities. And they review my work.
Okay. I've got further questions from the community, but let's go ahead.
If I can kind of expand upon that point just for a moment. So I'm sure your integrity is completely intact and I don't mean to impugn that in any way, shape, or form. I guess the concern I have is the ability of Mr. Matisse to dismiss you. What would you say that, how would you respond to that? Does Mr. Matisse have the ability to dismiss your company if there was findings that were not beneficial to his costs?
I suppose he does. And you would presumably find out about that and take whatever action you feel is appropriate. Mr. Matisse is not, this project is not one that my company depends on particularly. We have more than one iron in the fire. I did not meet Mr. Matisse until before the first planning commission meeting that I met here. He got me out of a roster because he needed a CIH to do the gas recertification on the tanks according to the fire department and the county requirements. So he looked me up in a book and called me. And then these other issues arose with the soils and the lead and the asbestos. And those are all things that are within my scope. So he found me, it's just another project. I, in fact, my wife and I come to Morro Bay at least once or twice a year to go birdwatching and have a holiday. I like this place. And, you know, my Sierra Club membership card says since 1953. I'm 60 years old, do the math. It was my parents' membership. So, you know, I think I can help Mr. Matisse run this project so that all these concerns are addressed. And that's what he's asked me to do. If he's not happy with whatever I do, he'll have to answer to you. He'll presumably have to replace me. And then you get to grill that person. So, you know, it is what it is. Like I say, I'm happy if the city pays me or if you pay a third party to review what I do. Or presumably, Aaron with the county is going to show up periodically and take a look at things. You know, I also have professional liability insurance and my licenses and so on. I have to be prepared at any time for any third party to come onsite and review what I'm doing. So I can't finesse things for Mr. Matisse without risk to myself.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, let's see, you have questions for it?
I'm having difficulty deciding what's more assuring, your 30 years of experience or baby's Sierra Club. Just a couple of questions. Uh, 30 years or 26 or 30 years of experience?
26 with tanks and 38 total environmental.
And, and how long you, have you been sort of running the show as opposed to, uh, you know, a lesser position on one of these projects? You're sort of supervising, supervising your companions?
26 years ago, when I was hired by California Environmental Geologists and Engineers, um, which was owned by a classmate of mine from, from UCLA. Um, my first project, I was the principal oversight of a, um, demolition and PCB removal and asbestos removal on a state superfund site in, in Commerce. Um, that was a 700,000 square foot industrial building. Um, and my boss was the, um, the, the principal professional on the job, but I was his agent in the field for the entire project. Um, so I've been in responsible charge pretty much the whole time, uh, the last 27 years or so. Prior to that, I was, um, the, uh, principal, uh, or the responsible person on asbestos abatement projects and starting in about 1986, I was overseeing and managing asbestos abatement projects. Um, and, uh, so, yeah, with, with tanks, I've been, um, in responsible charge for, for about 26 years.
I'm also recalling in my career that with some frequency, I, I sort of, I would find myself in this conflict on one side was, uh, do it faster and cheaper, and the other side of the conflict was do it safer. I, I would imagine on some occasions, you've run into some sort of conflict like that, or am I guessing wrong?
There's, there's often cost pressure. Um, because of my experience and my, and my background, I often save customers money by, um, sort of getting at the, at the heart of the issue and, and finding ways to cut costs by doing it right. Um, I used, uh, certain testing technology to save an, an owner about $5 million in disposal costs for lead-contaminated material that was found in excavation for, it was actually for the Water Garden Development in Santa Monica. Uh, they found this lead-contaminated material in the excavation, and I was able to save him about $5 million by segregating its technical, rickre hazardous, non-rickre hazardous, and non-hazardous material using onsite testing, uh, so they didn't have to dispose of the whole thing as rickre hazardous, which is the most expensive. Um, so I've actually saved customers money through that kind of knowledge. Um, I won't work for people who are too cheap or who tell me to, you know, fit within a certain budget if it's not appropriate. Somebody comes to me and says, can we do this project for X? And I say, no. I say, okay, you find someone who can do it for you because it, it, that's not going to happen. And again, most of these projects are under agency oversight, so you can't get away with stuff, you know? Um, I helped send an asbestos contractor to jail because he was falsifying hazardous waste manifests. Um, so, you know, I do the best I can, but it's, uh, um, again, this is, this is a pretty straightforward project. It's, it's a big project for Morro Bay maybe, but I work in the industrial areas of Los Angeles County all the time on, on large industrial sites and so on with much more complex and more toxic material, um, more complicated sites. Um, this, this one, this one is actually pretty straightforward.
Okay. Um, there's been suggestions, some explicit, some implied, that if, if we were to, if we were to have a full-fledged environmental impact statement requirement, that with, with respect to the careful removal of possible contaminants, whether they be lead or petroleum products, that we, we might be doing something different. We might require something different if there were an overview of an environmental impact statement as opposed to a mitigated, uh, negative declaration. And I'm not at all sure that that's the case. You, you've probably been in situations where you were removing something, uh, in the midst of an environmental root, environmental impact statement, and could you comment on that?
Environmental impact reports tend not to address the details of how to do the remediation. Um, they, they tend to deal in externalities like truck traffics and emissions and stuff like that. Uh, in this case and nearly all the cases that I've done, the projects are overseen by a COOPA or DTSC or Cal, or EPA or the Water Board. In this case, it would be County Environmental Health is overseeing the demolition, the removal of the facility and any remediation that may be required, and the site assessment that defines that remediation. Uh, and we have to submit a, a work plan for their approval, and we have to notify them when we're going to do it, and they have the opportunity to come out and oversee that. So that's your protection on the remediation itself. Um, if that ends up being done, it's done under county oversight, and they have to pre-approve our, our work plan. E I R process doesn't really address that, um, work plan requirement. We have to say, here's what we're going to do, here's our emergency procedures, here's our procedures for, you know, unanticipated, um, things, here's the site characteristics, here's the soil concentrations that we found in the site assessment, we're going to dig this deep, we're going to shore it, we're going to whatever, um, we're going to load it thus and so, we're going to transport it thus and so. Um, the trucks hauling the metal and the concrete will be covered for dust. Um, the truck, if any contaminated soil is transported, it will either be burrito wrapped with plastic. Uh, in other words, we line the truck, we fill it, and then we cover it with the plastic. We call it burrito wrapping. Um, or it'll be loaded into covered bins, uh, roll-off bins with, with covers. Um, again, this is, this is routine. Um, I don't know if you, any of you are familiar with Los Angeles, with the corner of Santa Monica Boulevard and La Brea Avenue? Have you ever been there? There's a Target store and a Best Buy, the Starbucks on the corner. Um, that store has three levels of parking underneath. It was a 230,000 cubic yard excavation. 86,000 of those cubic yards were gasoline-contaminated soil, really reeking hot stuff. And I oversaw the excavation and transport of all that soil, monitored it. Um, that stuff, like I say, it was thinking hot, and we were hauling about 80 loads a day of contaminated material and 150 loads a day of, of clean material out of that excavation in the middle of LA. Um, and again, that was all under oversight by the, uh, State Water Board, which is part of Cal EPA.
Now, so I, I would imagine the major concerns are, have to do with those kinds of elements escaping in some fashion, be they at the site or as they're loading the truck or in transport. So you, you seem to be saying that no matter what, the remediation procedures for what has to be removed are pretty much the same under a, uh, an environmental impact statement or a, um, mitigated damages declaration. Is that, so is that too much of an oversimplification?
What I'm saying is that the appropriate authority for overseeing the remediation is the, the COOPA agency, the Environmental Health Agency with, with jurisdiction over the project. Um, I just looked it up. This project is not, is closed under DTSC and was never looked at by federal EPA. It's a county tank site and, and county environmental health. The, it's a much more detailed, specific, um, uh, protocol than would be the case with the E I. E I R just says this is what the impacts are going to be outside the project area. Again, traffic, noise, that sort of thing, which the reviewer, uh, or the M N, the, the way who prepared the M N D, um, provided mitigations for those impacts and concluded that with those mitigations, covering the truck traffic, for instance, and the noise and so on, um, brought it down to less than significant level. Okay, so, so the non-remedial impacts, the, the impacts of doing the work on the property and, and going back and forth are covered by the M N D, and it brings it to less than significance, so the E I R isn't necessary. The remedial aspects with containing the contaminated material, getting it off-site and disposed of safely, is addressed by the county's requirements and their permit process with the work plan approval.
And there's only one standard. They don't, they don't decide they have a set of standards for an environmental impact situation and a mitigation situation, correct?
Right. Yeah. They, their protocols are, in this case, for petroleum-contaminated material. Um, I should add, I gave the example of the gasoline contamination on the West Hollywood project. Um, that's volatile material. The jet fuel we're dealing with here is, is, it's semi-volatile. It's, it has very low volatility, and it's less toxic and less mobile than, than gasoline would be. So, um, there, there's less concern with that stuff escaping, if you will.
Richard, do you have questions for?
Um, I'd like to ask something to Jeff Reed, the attorney.
Okay, let's get, let's finish off with, with him. Do you have any questions?
Um, real quick, you said that this was never a superfund site? Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Um, so go, go ahead. Go ahead and ask your next question.
Um, yeah, for Mr. Reed.
Thank you.
I, I'm a little, I was a little confused on, when you were talking about the piecemealing part. You said that, uh, on the piecemealing, you said there's no const, there's no consequence to development by this project? Is that correct?
I'm, I'm saying that the fact that a, um, tank demolition project is undertaken will not affect your ability to later establish an appropriate environmental evaluation and mitigations of a future site development activity. When there, the two are causally linked in some of those other cases where you've got a project that's dependent upon a roadway and you don't analyze them together because they're linked, you're piecemealing because you've lost the ability of possibly craft, you know, evaluating the full significant impacts of the thing. Where there's going to be, if the concern is about a future residential development, there's going to be plenty of opportunity. First of all, it's already been evaluated by the fact that it was included in your general plan and was zoned, right? It was probably, it's evaluated under an E I R, um, based upon a plan-level analysis. That's all that anything could be done at this stage anyway, frankly, if you were to even do that, because there's no more known about what would be specifically developed. It's just a tool. I think somebody mentioned that there was a bargaining chip, as it were, right? Um, not an appropriate environmental evaluation basis for that. So the, the tank project and all of the conditions and mitigations would be the same regardless of whether or not there would be a residential development. The residential development is not being prejudiced by the fact of the prior tank. You can do the complete evaluation. You aren't pre-committing to anything beyond what the, the zoning has already been done. And so there is not that causal linkage that would trigger a piecemealing, uh, claim. And that's what the standards effectively enunciated by the, um, by the, uh, the Supreme Court as, as well as many of the other cases.
So you're saying basically that the, that the tank, that demolition project is not a function of a future residential project development?
I'm, you know, you could, you could, you could always claim that if something happened here, then it would allow this future thing to be done. And I'm saying that the courts, when they evaluate whether or not piecemealing is in effect, don't make it that kind of an analysis. They look to see whether there's a causal linkage such that you would be prejudicing your ability to subsequently do an environmental evaluation. If there's not enough information about any, a, a project to have it be a project, the Supreme Court has said you are going to be wasting time, effort, and money by doing that. So it would be premature. And so this is exactly a case where it would be premature to be evaluating a residential development project simply to allow the completion of a remediation and demolition of a, of a jet fuel tank.
Because, you know, when I look at it, the way I look at it is that a residential development is, you know, maybe your tank isn't a function of residential development, but residential development is a function of this tank removal project. You got to have the tanks removed before you have any kind of residential development, correct?
You also have to have a zoning and a general plan in place for that, which, which you already did. And so that, that, that is the baseline, and that's the, that's the reason why you're suggesting that residential development would occur, because the city's already planned to have it done. But what there is not is a project. There is not any density, there is not any street designs, there is not any evaluation of, of, of water and wastewater, and it would be simply irrelevant to the current effort in environmental evaluation necessary for the tank remediation project. It would be premature.
Okay, because...
And, and again, it would not prejudice your ability to do whatever further evaluation that you would ever think would be necessary for that future, um, residential development. And this isn't just my, you know, opinion. I mean, I understand we're talking legal analysis of what is piecemealing under various myriad of Byzantine, uh, court decisions, but you have your own legal counsel who is of the same opinion, and you have your own environmental evaluator who did the M N D, who is of the same opinion.
Yeah, but see, the, the thing is, is, um, I'm trying to get my thoughts here.
Let me ask you a question while.
Okay.
Okay. If a future plan comes before us for residential development on this site, is there anything that would preclude us or, preclude us or require us to do, instead of a mitigated negative declaration for the future development, an E I R?
I, I can't answer that question right now because I don't know what the nature of what that project would be. There are some circumstances where, um, a residential project could be construed as an infill development and maybe be streamlined by, uh, housing policy laws and SEQA. I don't know that this project would qualify for that. There may be an ability to determine that all of the potentially significant impacts are mitigated to a level of less than significant, in which case there's no requirement for an E I R. Doesn't mean an environmental evaluation wasn't done, it just means that there's not a likelihood that there's going to be a, an unmitigated impact such that you would have to subsequently adopt a statement of overriding considerations. Um, and, uh, but, but the bottom line is, that full complement of, of evaluations, whether you do an M N D or an E I R, you will not be prejudicing your ability to make that decision subsequently based upon the fact that this project went forward. And you will not be under value, estimating the... And you will not be estimating the potential consequences of that future project by virtue of having allowed this to be done.
Okay. Let's say that we have, this was, that this land isn't residential. If it was open space or a tag, right? Then it's kind of a, the MND kind of like is almost a no-brainer, right? You just clear everything out and you're good to go. However, right? Or do you think you need an EIR for that?
Well, under the analysis that, you know, you are doing site preparation, I mean, I suppose the same argument would hold, that you are now creating a potential for something else to happen. My point is, that is not the standard. And the mere fact that you have adopted the zoning, but you're on the right track, which is the mere fact that you have adopted the zoning is now the basis under which they're claiming that there's this project connection. But that was a prior decision that you made that is unrelated to this particular activity. You're right. You would have to be, what's your other option? Is to leave the tanks there and allow them to have the deterioration in the environment and have the benzene and the lead paints and the hydrocarbons just sit there? I mean, that's not appropriate, right? I mean, we want to have this thing done and your future ability to evaluate future development is going to be unprejudiced by allowing this work to be done.
Yeah, but that's my point. The point is, is that it is residential, zoned, right? So when you're done with this project, it's a function, this project is a function of what our zoning says.
This project has complete independent utility unaffected by whether or not there is going to be a future residential development.
You gave an example of a little, something about a roadway, a little supermarket or something that couldn't happen until a roadway happened, right?
The two were connected by the project approvals, right? That the road had to be developed in order for that thing to occur. Here, we're not suggesting that the residential development must occur in order for us to be able to tear down.
No, but the residential zone is now made available, right, for development by this project occurring.
No, the zoning was made available by the city 30 years ago when it decided that that would be the desired long-term development use of that property. It just happened to have a tank there, a tank that is now no longer a legal use and the client and the owner are simply asking for permits to be able to take out something which is no longer a legal use, which is creating potential environmental impacts that need to be remediated.
Okay. Okay. I think, oh, go ahead.
You know, I'm persuaded, the environmental impact statement is designed to make a determination of what are the potential or likely impacts. And I'm persuaded here that it's difficult to justify that when we don't know what the impactors are. So I get that argument and I actually went back and read Laurel in detail, so I understand their opinion. But I'm also aware of typically how much importance or weight is given to what the expectations are, reasonable expectations are of people in disputes. And I could foresee a situation, you know, somewhere down the line where, you know, perhaps your client is saying that that area has been zoned residential and for all practical purposes, the toxics have been removed and that an environmental impact statement isn't any longer required and move on from there. So I think, but it could go in a very different direction. In fact, when, if sometime in the future, a project comes before this board and we could be informed by experts on environmental impact review statements that indeed some kind of a statement is justified in this future development on the property.
Absolutely.
And that's probably, I'd even go so far as to say that might be likely, given the size and the environmentally sensitive area that it's located and perhaps also the interest of the residents.
It very, very well be. And again, your ability to make that determinations is not going to be prejudiced.
Let me come to my statement. And it's possible that the judgment of that statement would be to severely constrain what was the planned project at the moment or in the most serious conclusion that no development at all would be allowed on that track for reasons of environmental impact, in which case the applicant loses his chance to profit from the purchase and he probably loses the opportunity to recoup any of the sizable expenses associated with this demolition. So I would just like to make sure that we're on record that the applicant is assuming a considerable risk at this point and that he's incurring considerable expenses, which sometime in the future, you know, may turn out never to be recovered. Would you say that your client is on notice of that and is aware of those risks?
I would suggest that my client is making an informed risk that development in the state of California is always fraught with significant constraints in that, but, you know, I'm not going to suggest that a government could constrain all economically potential use of a property without some potential consequences. So you should talk to your legal counsel about that. But he is taking absolutely significant economic risk that a future appropriate conditioning of future development might not be as economically worth the current investment in the tank removal, which I think is what you're getting at.
Well.
And the other thing is, if you waited until you, you know, substantially constrained this potential future development activities on the site, he may decide he just wants to go ahead and just leave the tank there. I mean, you know, I think you're better off having it removed.
You know, and I can appreciate your reluctance. So let me rephrase it. Your client is on notice that an environmental impact statement is a distinct possibility.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Okay. Another question that came up is, you know, who are the owners? Who is the true applicant? And do we have people and faces that are attached to these letters and initials?
Rhine LP and Moro 94 LLC are the legal owners of the property. And there was a private CVI, I think, at one time was an owner and there was a subsequent deed to the entity and I gave copies of that deed to the staff previously. I mean, are there wandering around human beings? First of all, there's not a legal requirement that we identify all the members of a limited partnership or an LLC.
Yeah, I understand.
But I can tell you that Mr. Soli and Mr. Matisse are the two wandering around human beings that I'm familiar with and I don't know if there's others or not, but those are certainly two principles.
Okay. I guess on the final say on the piecemealing and the MND instead of the EIR, would the council like to say something? Thank you very much.
Sure. As expressed before, for piecemealing to occur, the definitive case is Laurel Heights, the California Supreme Court case. And it basically says that you need to have two factors for piecemealing to occur. First one is that there needs to be a reasonably foreseeable consequence of the initial project. The future project has to be a reasonable foreseeable consequence of that initial project. And the second prong, that one has to be there also, is that the future expansion or action will be significant in that it will likely change the scope or nature of the initial project or its environmental effects. So you have to have both of those there for what is claimed a possible residential development to be included in the environmental review. As for the first one, as emphasized before, the possibility of residential development is a function of the underlying zoning. Tonight, there is not any permit or application before the planning commission for residential development. If and when that happens, then the planning commission presumably will be able to do this entire process again. You know, there will be environmental review. I can't say without knowing what the application is, what that environmental review will consist of, but there's certainly the possibility that there would be not just a negative declaration, but as in this case, perhaps a mitigated negative declaration, or there might be the need for an EIR. We just don't know. But this entire process will have to occur again. And there'll have to be further permits if there's residential applications or development that go to the city. So whether or not there's residential development in the future, that's not a reasonably foreseeable consequence of the decision tonight. That property itself might just lie there undeveloped and might get sold. Somebody, whether it's this property owner or someone they sell it to, might ask for a zone change. And the actual property itself, looking at the underlying parcel or the underlying property, I'm inclined to think the tract map, tract map as it exists right now would probably allow just one home anyways, so they would need to subdivide it. I mean, there's so much more that would need to occur for any residential development to occur. So I don't believe that that first prong is met. But you also have to meet the second prong, and this one, I think, is somewhat unequivocal, which is that whether or not there's any future residential development, that wouldn't change the environmental review that's being done for this project. So based upon how the California Supreme Court has interpreted SEQA, based upon the guidance of Laurel Heights, the seminal case in this matter, our conclusion is that there isn't piecemealing by not having any speculative residential development in the environmental review. And also, just to keep it real simple, there's no environmental review possible on a project that is entirely unknown. We can't do an environmental review on a big question mark. We have no idea what's going to happen to this property. It's right now zoned residential. Doesn't mean it's always going to be zoned residential. We have no idea what's going to happen to the property. And if the property owner doesn't want to develop it right now, then that's their choice. And if they do choose later to develop it, they're going to have to go through this whole process again and there'll be the opportunity for environmental review then.
Okay, thank you.
I got a question for Chris.
Okay, sure.
Hey, Chris, now, on this second prong where you said it, you know, you might change, you know, if you do, the way we handle this has no effect on the future of the development, but it's zoned residential right now. Now, it might change and blah, 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 yeah, but right now it's what, R1? Is it R1 zone? Is that what it is?
Yes.
R1 zone. Okay, so based on that, we can safely say that this project will open up that zone for development, residential development, right?
Removing the tanks is, yes, a precondition for development.
Right. Now, Scott, maybe you could help me with this a little bit. On the Chevron property deal that's going on, okay? And that's adjacent to it, right?
The Chevron property on the outside of the city limits the 3,000-ish acres that are out there.
And then they're talking about the panorama right there, yeah, where we're doing that. Now, that is, there's some talk about developing that adjacent to it with making residential zoning there?
As part, no, absolutely not. As part of the general plan, local coastal program and zoning code update, we've identified that as a future area where we could include it in the sphere of influence for the city. It would maintain the same land use that it does in the county agricultural, which would allow for a single-family home on those lots. Intent there being for preservation of ridge tops and views to the backdrop of the city. So that's the intent behind, that's the intent behind the actions that have taken place to this point in the draft general plan and LCP update.
How many, in this particular lot, how many lots, potential residential lots are there?
There's a lot of constraints there. It's hard for me to say. I don't know, you know, it's seven to 14 units per acre for the moderate density underneath the new zoning code, which is similar, which is. Equivalent to the R1 development standard, but it doesn't mean you can fit that many on there. And then we have minimum lot sizes in the city as well. Currently 6,000, although proposed in the update to go to five. But then there's constraints on the site because there are slopes there that are steep and there's ESHA and then we have to set the setbacks, which was brought up tonight. I mean, we have to evaluate those things in relationship to the development proposal that would come forward. And so I have one thing to add to that. So were the city to evaluate a project that we don't have in front of us right now, you know, in the, with an EIR, say, okay? And the tank demo project was part of that, the EIR would be broken into pieces almost. You would have mitigation measures for the demo project and then you'd have mitigation measures that are largely dedicated to the development of the property. There'd be almost two documents in one. You might have some mitigations that cross over, but you'd be explaining that you're going to do those similar mitigations for the tank demo and you're going to do those similar mitigations for the project. You'd be constantly saying that throughout the document, just because they're, you know, they're sort of separate processes. You're going to go through demo, get rid of the tanks, you're going to have that whole remediation process potentially out there because they're aware that contamination is there. They've got to clear it all and then they would come forward. It's almost, I mean, if you were to combine it, it's still almost two projects.
Now, Scott, you brought up setbacks. So the ESHA setbacks, we're talking, before it was 25 feet, now it's 50 foot and some of the public expected it to be 100 feet or it could be 100 feet. How was that determination made?
Can I interject for a second? I just want to remind you that the ESHA buffer area is on both sides. And so it affects the property which we show, the applicant has shown on the demo plans, but it also extends across the street into those homes. And so it just needs to be considered. Currently, a 50-foot boundary on the ESHA would affect a handful of those homes. A 100-foot would affect a lot of those homes. And if they never change, then they're probably not much affected. But if they ever want to be torn down and redeveloped, then it could be a different story. So I think it just needs to be considered. It's just not shown because they show only what's on the property line.
Okay, okay. So if we expand the ESHA boundary, we're putting more residents at risk of being non-conforming?
It sort of answers the question that was asked about whether it's urban or not urban, right? The point that Nancy makes is, we have houses over there and a street. So we, you know, you looked at the urban reference because of the development that we have over there. We can't just, we didn't just look at the project site, we looked at the area in which it sat and we said, this is urban, it's developed. The site's developed, I mean, it has tanks on it.
Yeah. Okay, another thing that was brought up was, do we need to read into the record the Coastal Commission report for the Brown Act?
No, we don't. The Coastal Commission report, just like a bunch of other submissions that were brought in before the agenda packet was published, is being provided to the commissioners. Copies are available to the public and they're public records now, but we don't need to read that into the record, nor do we need to read every other letter that we've received since the agenda was published.
Okay, so you'll stand by that for the Brown Act then?
Yes, and copies, of course, should be made available to the public.
And our copies are made available to the?
It's not on the website. We didn't have time to do that. It literally came in while I was ready to come over here.
Okay. Yeah, should we hand ours out? So, okay. Okay, Scott, was there, these were the questions that I've kind of noted as we went through a public comment. Do you have any other questions that we received a public comment that you think are important to bring forward?
Yeah, should you give us a minute or so to look through our notes? Would it be possible to take a break and give the public a chance to review the documents we have? I mean, is that something we can consider?
That's great. Let's go ahead and we'll take, we'll take about 10-minute break here, so. Yeah. Okay. Okay, welcome, welcome back. We will, we're still in discussion and public comment at this point. So, okay, my question was to Scott, I think we need a little more, you brought this up. I think if we could have a little more clarification between what the difference is on an MND and an EIR, and what the benefits are to the community for each, I think that would, that would be great. Thank you, Chuck.
No problem. I just wanted to reiterate again that doing the MND for this project, which we identified as the appropriate level of environmental review for the demolition of this site and the removal of all of these materials, doesn't mean that we would be eliminating the potential for doing subsequent environmental review for any future project. That would have to be evaluated and reviewed independently of the project that we're evaluating today. So hypothetically, if it was a residential project, as people have been bringing up today, that would have to go under a completely separate environmental review and this entire process all over again. So that could very well be an EIR if there is potential for an impact that cannot be mitigated to be less than significant. As far as the difference between an MND and an EIR, I think there is a potential that people might be asking for an EIR because it could delay this process substantially. EIRs can take over a year or even over two years in some cases to complete, so that may just be a method for pushing the can down the road to approving this project. But I just want to say that doing an EIR now, based on what we know about the proposed project today, would be really speculative because as a SEQA practitioner myself, if I had to write an EIR about a hypothetical residential project just based on land use and zoning, that might work for a project description if I'm basing it off of the general plan or zoning descriptions about what would hypothetically be allowed once the site is demoed and cleared of this infrastructure. But EIRs are so specific and so detailed, that would tell me nothing about future construction plans, timelines, I would have no way of evaluating or modeling air emissions. I mean, even if we did a SEQA document somehow with that little information, it would never be accurate or appropriate for a future project. So I think that's what we're talking about with trying to explain why this isn't piecemealing because there is no proposed project. So we really would have no way of doing even an appropriate MND level of environmental review for a hypothetical project at this point. So I just wanted to kind of clarify from a SEQA practitioner standpoint about how difficult and inappropriate that would be based on the information that we know today. And that's why we did what we believe is the appropriate level of environmental review based on the project description that we had.
Okay. And let me just bring this up. Who pays you?
My contract is with the city, so we were assisting the city with the preparation of this environmental document.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you very much for that.
I got a question for you.
You got a question?
Yeah, yeah. I got a question for you. Okay. When you do a MND, you go to, you're basically saying that all the mitigation is less than significant, right? And then when you do an EIR, you have unmitigatable consequences, correct?
So, yeah, I could explain that kind of from the approach standpoint. So typically, you would approach the SEQA process with an initial study, and that is the checklist from Appendix G of the SEQA guidelines. And at that point, you don't know if you're going to have, because it's so preliminary, right? We don't know if there's going to be an environmental impact that could be significant and unavoidable with, even with mitigation. So we use that checklist as a screening process to evaluate potential impacts, and then if we think that those potential impacts could be addressed and reduced to be less than significant through the implementation of mitigation measures, we proceed with an MND. A lot of times, even when we are working on an MND and we think that it's the appropriate level of environmental review, it's possible that we could still, through that level of review, find an impact that we cannot mitigate. A lot of times, it's air quality or greenhouse gases that we just cannot mitigate below ABCD thresholds. And if that's the case, even before that MND gets to this point that we're at today, we would let the lead agency know the MND is no longer appropriate, we need to bump this up to an EIR level of environmental review because we have a potential significant and unavoidable impact.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Jesse?
The likelihood of a categorical exemption for any kind of residential development on this property would be slim to none because of the ESHA, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. The ESHA and many other issues. I mean, bare minimum, you usually need a SWIP, you need erosion control. I mean, there are so many other mitigation measures that you would need to address a residential development on this site.
Joseph, do you have anything for?
Well, I would imagine if an EIR is done, and then it's deemed that there, the development as planned is simply unacceptable, that, you know, the, the impact is too great to be tolerated on that, do you simply amend this report? I'm trying to get at like a timeframe. Is the original statement amended? You don't certainly start from the beginning all over again, do you?
Well, this would be an independent project, so.
Assuming that, assuming that there is a project
A future project.
Comes forward sometime in the future, and a statement is, search is done, and a statement is issued, saying, sorry, we certainly can't tolerate a project of 20 or 30 units. Is it, is the, does the applicant go back and simply amend what he's doing, and the people who did this statement sort of do their own amendments, or does everything start?
Well, if the future residential project was rejected and the no-project alternative was selected, then that would be it. This document that is up for approval today would not be amended because it's two separate approvals, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. We good on that?
Just real quick, real thing, if you had enough unavoidable impacts when you're doing this project, this demolition project, not worrying about the future residential, at what bar would you, would it rise to an EIR for the demolition?
If we had one unavoidable impact, it would be an EIR.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
That clarifies a lot. I've got a question for the applicant, if you could come forward. And meanwhile, Scott, we have video surveillance or videos of most of the sewer lines in the, in the city. I know down our streets, we have videoed, you know, most of the collection system. Do we have videos of these streets, of the main, the main sewer lines in the, in the street for these?
They probably do have some video, but I don't know when it's from. And I don't know if it's for the whole line or not, or what the status of that is. I would imagine that some of it was done as part of the One Water Plan because they had needed to do the evaluation of these, so we might have really current data. I just, without talking with our public works director, I wouldn't, I don't know. And I don't think that, Nancy, did you talk to Rob at all about it? No. So I'm guessing we probably do have something because we needed to do evaluations of this infrastructure to bring the One Water Plan forward. I mean, it's in draft format, you know, now, but I don't know the specific answer to that. I haven't spoken with them, so.
Okay. Thanks for coming forward. No, I mean, you're not done yet. We've, you know, I'm seeing a lot of angst on the residents in the, the streets where the primary traffic is going, you know, regarding their sewer laterals. Well, we're, you know, essentially, we're dealing with 40-year-old infrastructure where, you know, or older. So a lot of those laterals, we're dealing with, you know, a pipe that was called Orangeburg. And if you're familiar with it, it has about a 25-year lifespan, and it's probably been in there 40 years. So, you know, people are really concerned about minimal impact on it and what the, you know, what would have an effect on that. Some of it, some of the laterals are probably in better shape. Would you be amenable to, if requested, to have, to do sewer, to do videos on sewer laterals for the, for the residents on the streets that are going to be impacted by the heavy traffic?
We would support that.
You would support that? Okay, great. Thank you very much. I think that would, okay.
It's not just the sewer laterals that we're talking about here, sewer mains as well.
Well, the sewer mains, but the city probably has that or may have that.
They don't have a lot of the current stuff that I know of, okay? And I analyzed several miles of it. And would you be willing to also videotape not only the sewer mains, like on the routes, but also, I think you're going to be on the northbound of Cayucis. Cayucis has a sewer, dedicated sewer main there as well.
Well, I think whatever our work is going to impact, we would videotape.
Okay. And as far as the, we just recently, like a few days ago on our street, had a leaky sewer, or leaky water main. Would you be willing to look into, I don't know how you would inspect those, but address that issue if we got together with the public works?
Yeah, I mean, if we're going to impact someone's sewer line because of what we do, we will take full responsibility for it.
And then how about the water distribution?
I would have to see where the water lanes go as opposed where the traffic is.
Okay, so that would be something that we'd have to talk to public works about.
Yeah, I think we could condition the project on that. Okay, thank you very much for, for that. So, okay, I think at this point, I think it's coming, do we have any other questions for staff? Okay, and I think it comes back for, for a comment here. Scott, did you, did we bypass, did I miss any of the pertinent questions that we should be asking?
There was questions about noise, and that is in the mitigating conditions, that 60 decibel level for jackhammers and hours of operation are limited.
Okay.
And the monitoring is continuous. I think one of the earlier speakers said that it wasn't, but it is continuous.
And do we have locations on the site map for where the monitoring stations are, or will that be determined? Please come forward.
We haven't produced a map of monitoring locations. The, the noise monitoring locations will be on the fence line opposite the residences. Locations to be determined. The air monitoring may be moved along the fence line depending on wind conditions.
Okay.
You know, the city is, I'm fine with the city helping me choose the noise monitoring locations. Ordinarily, I would just spread them out evenly along the fence line on the side that the residences are facing.
And they'll probably be dependent on wind direction also.
Less so, but potentially. The noise monitoring locations would probably be fixed unless you want me to move them. But
How many do you envision?
I envision three
Three.
For noise. And three downwind and one upwind for the air monitors.
Okay.
Or three on the residential side and one on the east side. The air monitoring, when we have an onshore breeze, is going to be not a big deal. When it's offshore, then it's blowing towards the residences, and we'll probably move those depending on the wind direction.
And the lead testing, is that a chemical process or a biological process?
The lead and asbestos testing are sample collectors, they're air samplers, and the samples have to be sent to a laboratory for analysis. There's no real-time monitoring of those compounds. We're doing real-time monitoring of dust and volatile organic compounds, but we don't have a way to, to measure those in real time. All of this monitoring is secondary. It's documentation of what happened. The real-time monitors, of course, will notify me if there's an excursion beyond the limits, but the primary monitoring is going to be me and my people observing the work. And if we see dust rising from the work inside the berms, we'll take action at that point to control it so that ideally, the monitors will only show background.
Have you done any soil or structural testing for, for lead? There was a lot of lead paint used in, by the military?
We have, I did collect some soil samples. There's, there's no significant amount of lead in the soil now. And we tested the, the tank surface with an XRF analyzer, and it's, it's leaded. The primer, there's an orange primer on the steel that's mostly covered by a non-lead paint. The finish coat is, is not lead, but the, the primer is around 30,000 ppm lead, and it's starting to get exposed in some areas by deterioration of the surface paint. But, excuse me, the, there is lead paint on the tanks initially. Excuse me, the contractor initially planned to torchcut the tank, and I mixed that. There'll be no hot work on the tank because of the lead.
Yeah.
Likewise, the pipes.
So in the shear, the operation by the, you know, in the shears, mechanically shearing the tanks, how much airborne lead would be released by, by the chipping or the flaking or the dusting of the primer coat?
We generally don't see much flaking. There's very minor flaking, and it's generally discrete flakes that fall to the ground at that point. We don't usually have much of it. That's why we choose to use the shears because it generally doesn't generate dust.
Okay.
You know, there'll be some flakes that come off, and we're going to have plastic on the ground. And then following the demolition, we're going to test the soil again and see what's there and skim off some surface oil if, if we have paint flakes.
In your experience, you know, we're getting into the weeds here, but that's part of the job right now, I'm sorry. But in your experience, do, you know, these jet fuel tanks, you know, were there, was there anything in the way of additives that was added to the jet fuel, to, you know, muscle fires or stabilizers that have shown up to be problematic like MTBE did in gasoline?
I've looked into, I've looked at MSDSs of JP5 fuel and haven't seen any compounds in there that are concerned to me. Again, I've been inside the tanks themselves twice, and they're clean, they're basically spotless inside, and I've monitored the air, there's no detectable VOCs inside, there's no odors inside. So the tanks themselves are quite clean inside. We don't know about the pipes. The Navy supposedly cleaned the pipes. The pipes are blinded, the Flanders are blinded going into the tank, so we can't see them from inside the tank. But we have a protocol for testing and ventilating and cleaning the pipes as we go. Hopefully, we'll, we'll check them, and there won't be anything in there. If there is, again, this is something I've, I've handled before.
So and then on the soil monitoring post-removal, is that going to be set up on a grid basis and soil samples taken to, down to bedrock? And how big of a grid and how much monitoring is going to be done, sampling is going to be done?
We'll probably do something like a grid under the tanks where we have no locus of, of concern. So we'll, we'll select several borings in the tank location. In the other locations, we're going to put some borings under the pump pad and along the piping lineations. And then in the areas that were previously identified as contaminated, probably won't investigate areas that have previously been investigated and not had contamination. Of course, they were only able to investigate Of course, they were only able to investigate in the previous investigations where it wasn't covered up by part of the facility. But, you know, the areas where there's previous clean borings, I probably won't redo those.
Okay.
I'll do the areas where there was contamination found to see what the current status of that is, and in the areas that couldn't previously be explored.
And from previous spills and previous testing that I read, that there was, you know, basically, I envision it, contamination went down, fuel went down, hit bedrock, hit the slip, slip plane, and ran along the slip plane because it's mostly serpentine in those areas, bedrock, serpentine. Have you tested downstream of, of where the contamination?
Well, I haven't.
Okay.
I haven't done anything other than the shallow borings under the tanks and a couple other locations.
Will that be part of the protocol?
The previous investigations, they actually put wells in and tested the groundwater. It's not so much the slip surface of the rock, it's that that surface is also a, a weep zone for the groundwater. There's no aquifer there, so groundwater goes through the soil, hits the bedrock and flows down the bedrock. And it did carry contamination down gradient, actually into the residential area. And the, the previous investigations by the Navy's consultants put in wells for some period of time and tested the groundwater, found contamination, and the contamination was judged to be not a threat to groundwater resources, but there was contamination there. The protocol that we're going to follow is to do the soil borings. And if contamination is found within, usually we use a twenty-foot range to groundwater, then we'll go back to the county and propose putting in wells to, to test the groundwater or doing hydro punch sampling. So, in the, in the first phase, we're just looking at the soil. Then if there appears to be a threat to groundwater, the county may require us, basically, we do a report, we send it to the county with our recommendations, and then the county either accepts no further action or they come back and they say, "Give us a work plan for groundwater investigation."
Okay, great.
So, it's, it's all dialogue with, with the county going forward from the tank removal.
Okay. Do we have any other questions regarding the specifics?
I, I do. You know, you mentioned that you're going to have these shears, and I never witnessed, I used to weld, but I've never had any, witnessed any of the shearing that goes on. How, it seems to me that that'd be a pretty loud process to shear the tanks, right? That's what you're going to do? Or, because here's what my thought is, is there another, another method? Is there like a water jet or anything that, how thick is the walls and can you, can you, have you explored any other?
Water jetting can do almost anything, but it's extremely expensive. The bottom course of the plates on the tanks, I believe, are an inch and a quarter thick.
The bottom?
Yeah, they're, they're eight-foot-high plates.
Okay.
Eight by twenty feet, I believe.
Okay.
Welded together, so the first course is the thickest.
Right.
And then going up, the top course, I think, is three-eighths.
Three-eighths on the top and then it just gets bigger to about an inch and a quarter?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
So, cutting, cutting the tanks into pieces that way
Mm-hmm.
would take a long time and be very expensive. It's, it's slow work with a water jet on stuff that thick.
Mm-hmm.
Again, it's feasible. It generates a lot of water, which is another problem.
Mm-hmm.
Wastewater, it'd be contaminated with lead and so on. And the shears, yeah, you'll know what's going on. There's sometimes a sort of tearing, screeching sound as you, as you cut it, but they're not as loud as impact hammers, they're not as loud as, as a saw.
Like an abrasive cutoff?
No, it's not that loud. Again, abrasive sawing is too hot for the lead.
Yeah.
It generates dust and fume.
Mm-hmm.
Low-speed saws, again, would take forever. If necessary, we might use low-speed saws on the piping.
Mm-hmm.
They're pretty effective. They cut slowly enough that you could collect the chips and there isn't dust coming off it, it doesn't heat up the metal. Or we might just use shears on the pipes.
Mm.
The, the shears aren't much louder than the, the engine on the, on the excavator.
Mm-hmm.
You know, like I say, during the day when we're working, you'll be able to tell there's something going on.
Mm-hmm.
It won't be as loud as a garbage truck driving past the house, although it's more continuous. And we have the berms there, the, the sound engineer did a modeling of, of all this and concluded it would, it would be okay. The, the berm helps us a lot with, with the noise issue, because there's only a certain amount you can do to mitigate that.
And you'll probably start from the backside, so you've got some shielding from the front of the tanks then, too?
Yeah. Yeah, they're going to have to start at the top and, and cut into it, start, you know, Oliver can speak to the, to the more detailed aspects of the process, but...
Could you give us a quick, for the community, could you give us a quick overview?
Good evening. So, with regards to the shears, they're hydraulic, so it's, all you're going to hear is the engine basically running on the excavator. As the shears cut, what you might hear occasionally is when metal might fall, or if a significant portion comes down, but it would just, it would be that portion and then it would be done.
Do you have, do you have attachment and crane lowering them, or do, do they just fall and drop?
They would mostly fall and drop, but they're not going to, but it's not, it's not like a, it's a slow process. It's not bang, 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 bang.
Okay.
So, basically, the shear reaches up and it, it's just a slow cut, and then it, then it just keeps going. And then, once it gets to a part that obviously is going to become detached, then that will fall to the ground. So, but as the shear cuts, small pieces will also fall down.
And what size pieces do you, will you be shearing those off, you know, that'll fit in the truck and be easily transportable?
Yeah. Basically, depending on, depending on the thickness of the, of the plate that we're cutting, it'll depend on the size that we're actually going to make. So, three to four feet would be the smallest, on up to ten feet long by fourteen, or wide enough, wide enough...
You've got to try to cut it as big as you can.
To fit it in?
To bring it down, and then once it's on the ground, he cuts it smaller for the ground.
Okay, okay.
See, because our, our primary concern is going to be making sure that the operator and the guys on the ground are safe.
Right.
So, if there is something that needs to come down, it's going to come down in a safe way. It could be a small piece or it could be a big piece depending on the way, because the tank will collapse in on itself. So, the way we work in, we work from the top, we start taking the sheets down, and it just starts collapsing inside of it. And then, once it's down, then we start cutting around the corners, around the sides.
Okay.
So, that's in a perfect world.
And you, and you believe, obviously, you believe hydraulic, hydraulic shears are the appropriate technology for this?
I do. You know, we, we kind of thought about maybe torch cutting it because it'd be just as fast, but once we found out it had lead paint, then that just...
Yeah, the fumes with it.
...stopped it.
Okay. Any other questions for the, on the mechanics of this?
Could I ask you about the, can we talk about the trees, the tree removal?
Sure. I think that's a good point.
You know, in the...
I'm not hurt sure who
Yeah, I'm not...
we should address this to.
Yeah, okay, because the, first of all, can you explain how five trees got removed or how many trees got removed without a permit?
I can't. I can say that when I was there in February of 2017, there were several trees that were rooted between the tank and the, the concrete around the tank that had fallen over.
Okay.
From a storm or the saturated ground or whatever. It was raining at that time, and the ground was saturated. So, at least a couple of them fell over. As far as anything that happened on the property, as far as coming in and, and cutting stuff, I don't know. I don't know if Chris or Brian knows.
There were, there was a total of five trees. Four of the trees were growing from underneath the tank and were at an angle, at a forty-five-degree angle. Several of those were actually falling, a part of it was touching the ground. There was one that was not on the ground, that was at an angle, but that one was designated for removal to allow the equipment to access where the tanks are. And that was, there was only one tree that was under that. The other four were already impacted trees, either leaning and/or dropped completely.
And then, you mentioned that there's going to be mitigation to replace the trees. I'm kind of confused, maybe, I'm not sure if that's staff or not, but where is all this going to occur and how is that going to work?
It's, it's, it was discussed in the last planning commission meeting, and there were a couple of options, and the option that the commissioners chose was to mitigate on-site.
Mm-hmm.
And so, we're leaving the plan a little bit up to the community development director, but the mitigation measures, the size of the tree and the number of trees required to mitigate trees removed is set in the MND. And there's a higher replacement required for trees removed without a permit, and that's, I mean, it's hard to tell what was removed without a permit versus what was falling down on its own, but...
Oh, so, so you'll just bump up the number?
Correct.
Okay. And then, the location of these trees, are they, presumably, we could relocate them to areas that would be least likely to be disturbed by future development?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
I would like to say that...
Come, come to the microphone, please.
I just wanted to specify that the tree replacement was not going to happen within the ESHA to avoid potential impacts to that area. So, we did make that clarification.
Okay, great. Thank you. Joseph?
So, the, the notion is that after three years, that these trees will be able to survive on their own without any irrigation or anything like that? Is that the idea?
That's correct.
Yeah. And I'm assuming that the, the grasses that are planted will just, won't require any kind of irrigation on their own to sort of do what they're supposed to do?
They need to get established, so it depends on, I guess, time of year and when they're planted, whether they'll need anything or not.
Okay.
So, is there an irrigation plan for that?
We haven't requested an irrigation plan, but I guess an irrigation plan could be requested as part of the demo permit.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. I think, I think we'll bring it back to the commission now and we'll start some deliberations. So, okay, who wants to, to go first here?
Let's see. As, as I said before, with respect to the ERI, EIR, EIR, you know, I'm persuaded it's just, it's not appropriate here because we simply don't know the, the impactors. We can't make any intelligent statements about it. Plus, this, I'm really, I've learned, I've concluded that the, that the, the methods to use to safely dig up and transport these toxic materials are the same under either approach, and so I think that was the concern of everyone, is that these materials are being dealt with in a proper way, not so much whether it's an environmental impact statement or a, whether it's done through a mitigated negative declaration. And it, there are so many issues and, and, and thought-through solutions for resolving these issues, be they noise or architectural elements, all of those, all of those issues. But it's always, it depends on, on the, on the details and how it's implemented, and that's also a function of people's good faith and, and their commitment to the community norms. And, you know, based on what I've heard of the applicant, its representatives and their testimony, I, I think they're going to adhere to that good faith and, and the community And then, there was, I think that's all I'll say at the moment.
Jesse?
So, if I'm hearing the, the community correctly, so there was a lot of concerns about, about what's going to be happening on their property and what's going to be, how they're, how they're going to be specifically impacted. And I, I think we had a lot of answers today. They might not have, all have been what we wanted to hear, but they were answers, so. I think what's kind of got everybody's, well, I don't want to say everybody, I don't want to make an absolute statement, but the collective...
Sorry.
That's okay. The collective observation I take away is that there's a level of, of distrust, quite frankly, between the applicant and the community. And in no small measure is that have to do with the possibility of, of future development there. So, I don't know where I was going with that really, but just to say that I think, based on the way the law is written, I think our legal counsel and the legal counsel of the applicant has, has presented it correctly. And I, and I do think that they have applied the SEQA requirements correctly, and I, and I feel that it was properly vetted. I just, I feel that the, the disconnect here is the future residential development and maybe the, the inability to speculate on what possibly could happen in the future, so.
Okay. Richard?
I was talking, I went to this Live Oak Festival this last weekend, and I was talking to this one lady about, she was in the legal profession. And we were talking about politics, religion, and ethics, easy, light subjects, you know? And one of the things that came up was, like, you know, rules and laws. And one of the things she said is that in society now, it's more of a way of not following the rules, but mitigating around the rules, okay? And I, from my experience, my background, I, I worked on military facilities before and, and in different areas, and I, on the outside, when I just step back and look at, at this site, it's a military facility. And to me, what comes up for me is it's going to take an EIR, decommissioning a military facility. And we're talking about a mitigated negative deck where we could say, okay, we can mitigate these impacts, this is less than significant, this is less than significant. But we have enough of those, and when you combine them, it, it is significant. And one of the, one of the main, main ones that I have is, is the, the dust, the, you know, the air quality and the traffic situation, okay? We have a dilapidated sewer infrastructure in this city. This is, there's, you could look at the videos yourself, you know, and, which I have. And in fact, right now, we have a leaky sewer line that's going in Alva Paul Creek right now, you know, as we speak, you know? And I feel that the citizens that live there, they have a really valid point, a valid point, because they're responsible for their sewer lateral. But when you go in with a truck, and, and I've witnessed these things, and you, you know, and the sewer line bellies or dislocates, these things break off and then it causes, you know, problems that you don't see for a long time, and then that's how sinkholes are created. And I, I feel that, that, you know, there is some unmitigatable impacts on this whole project. And that's why I, you know, I, I think that this mitigated deck is a great start, but I feel that this, this project rises to an EIR.
I think we've, we've explored a lot of the options here, and I think we've, we've been through this project enough time, and it's getting, I think it's gotten better and better with the con... with the conditions that we've put forward. And I think we've heard the community, and they've had several opportunities now to address the concerns. And I'm not hearing, you know, this go-around, I'm not hearing anything really new. And I think we've, I think we've dialed it in as best we can. There are always going to be, there are always going to be what-ifs, and there's always, and there's always going to be, anytime you do something, it's the butterfly flapping their wings. There's going to be consequences somewhere else. We may or may not be able to foresee them. But I think we've got a good start on this MND that will mitigate a lot of the instances. And quite frankly, I'm really impressed with the consultants that you've had hired, that you've hired. And I think if there's some, you know, if there's some way that the city could allay the, the community's concern that the consultants are looking out for the best interest of the public, then I think that would, that would go a long way to ease the angst on this project. Also, the commitment by the applicant to video the mains and the laterals, I think, is really important. And I think, I think it would be wise for them, for the applicant, to do that, to have anybody that wishes to have their lateral videoed to request it. And if the applicant would, could video that, to establish the baseline of what the infrastructure is for the, for the private laterals. And then, you know, somebody doesn't have that done on the upfront, I think that should preclude them from being able to file a claim against, against damage that the applicant may or may not have caused. But I think this would be, would be wise to video as many laterals as possible, basically to protect the applicant, would be the way I would look at it. So some of those, I know some of those properties there, they don't have cleanouts, they don't have access, you don't even know where some of the laterals are. But it, to get, to get an inventory of the laterals that are there, and as many as they can possibly be, that videotaped, and to work with Public Works to have the video, the mains videoed. And we already have a requirement to have the road assessed with a video survey. And I think that, you know, that's already condition number six on the Public Works. And condition number eight has applicant agrees that the issuance and acceptance of a building permit, that these notes are going to be on, well, that the following notes are added to the permit, to the plans for the permit for demolition. The applicant agrees that issuance and acceptance of a building permit for demolition is conditioned on applicant guarantees and warrants that any damage caused by or arising from such demolition activities to city facilities, e.g., curb, berm, streets, sewer line, water line, or any public improvement shall be repaired by the applicant at no cost to the city of Morro Bay. So I think included in that should be sewer laterals and probably water line, water line laterals that are in the, in the right-of-way.
Did you want to add a condition that relates to the obligation to video?
I think we, I think we should.
Okay. So I have some draft language, if you want me to read it. Applicant shall provide video of sewer laterals at homeowner's request and all sewer mains along the truck routes. Prior to and after to, and after the demo work is completed, applicant will work with city public works department to determine location of water lines in the streets impacted by truck traffic and take appropriate measures to assess pre and post demo conditions.
Okay. I'm not sure if that quite gets us enough pre baseline information. So maybe if you could just tighten it up on, on a pre demolition or pre-construction survey?
So you wanted to read pre and post-construction?
Yes.
Okay. Pre and post-construction. We'll add that language to the condition. Okay.
Okay. Just, just so you know, they have these, you get to put sewer cameras down, and they have them, they can split off to the laterals as you go, so you don't have to... Oh, okay. That's really, I didn't know they had that technology. So, okay.
Are we thinking of precluding residents from being able to later bring insurance claims if they don't do this video investigation?
I'm, I'm thinking if we have enough baseline surveys.
I don't think that's a possibility.
Yeah.
People can, you know...
Because especially if you can do that, they can get it.
Yeah. But I think it's important to get as much information as we can. And I think the applicant should be, you know, if they're wise, they would, and they seem to be, that they would, would want that also. So, and they've already agreed to it, so.
Chair, if I may, it certainly would help someone's claim if they took advantage of the videoing, absolutely. And, you know, to let the public know that they have the ability to do that would certainly facilitate any claim in the future.
Yes, I think so too.
Is that something we could take care of with a mass mail, with a mailer?
Yes. Okay, good. Okay, so do we, do we have a motion?
I have a question.
Yes.
You raised the, you raised the question about ensuring that the community was adequately protected and was assured that we were looking out for their best interest and that the project was being monitored. And you raised the issue about whether the industrial hygienist should be hired by the city previously. Is that something you're interested in before we conclude this?
Yes. I think so. I think that would, you know...
So having the city contract directly with the industrial hygienist, is that...
Yes, and to be reimbursed by the, by the applicant. And, okay, I think we've closed public comment. Do you, will allow you to...
Since we're adding the conditions, it would probably be appropriate to make sure they're okay with the breadth of the conditions we're adding, at least to inquire about that. So that'd be great if you could allow them to...
Okay, thanks for the guidance.
First of all, if the commission is going to condition it upon that, then we could certainly...
Accept it. I'd push back a little bit on the basis that Mr. Tiffany talked about the three licenses, maybe four, that are at risk, and his professional accreditations that are at risk. I don't know that he's really someone of a character that would require this. At a practical level, when you contract through the city, you will add a 25% cost for that professional service fee, which I understand if the city were doing a procurement process that they were administrating. So if you are going to do this, I guess I would ask that you consider maybe reducing the markup, as it were, because now we have identified a person. And I don't think it's going to be quite the same administration, maybe five or 10% as opposed to the 25 if you do go forward with it. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll close public comment. You know, Jesse, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I was gonna, I'm sorry. I was gonna say something. I mean, so if we didn't go down that route, and the, and the applicant decided to replace the industrial hygienist, in other words, they were under the employ of the applicant, and they decided to replace that firm, so if they weren't unwilling to pay the 25% that is required of city administration, that's just the required fees. So I mean, I guess they would be able to stop work if they were, if they were unable to reconcile with the industrial hygienist that is currently under the employ of the applicant. That's the only other way I think we could make it work.
I think we need to get, you know, a little more information from our lawyer and Scott on this. How would we make this work? And can we do a reduction on, you know, we don't usually deal with money here. I mean, this is more city council as far as fees.
Can I just clarify that we have a condition 11 currently that requires that the industrial hygienist be approved by the city. So if, if we didn't have Michael working for the city, and he was let go off the project, the project would stop because it's a required position until there was another hygienist approved by the city in place. So we have that condition already in place, and we could modify it if, if the commission decided that they would like it to be a contract directly with the city.
Okay. What, let me poll, poll the commission here. What do you guys think?
I'd like to say explicitly that it is not a reflection on the applicant or the environmental hygienist. I, for one, place a great deal of importance in optics and perceptions. And given the level of emotion about this entire project, and the number of people who haven't taken the time to actually come to hearings and read about things and really be informed, I think this would do a lot to just quiet that segment of the citizenry. So that's why I would support it.
Okay. So clarify for me. You used too many words for me there.
So I, I'm sorry. So I would be in favor of the compensation through the city and do whatever we could to reduce the markup.
Good. Can we hear from, from the person we're talking about?
In my experience, nearly all of the projects I do of this nature are done under a COPE agency or a state agency. And in this case, this project is under jurisdiction of county environmental health. And they have professionals who are qualified to look at my work and tell you if I'm doing my job. And so one option would be to request them to inspect on some schedule or, you know, drop-in, unannounced is the way we typically do that. And, you know, see if they'll show up once a week or whatever, unannounced, and review my records and look at the site. Or if the city has somebody who's qualified in the fire department or, you know, fire department has this materials, people might do that for you. That's another way of keeping tabs on me or assuring your stakeholders that what I'm doing is proper and meets their standards. County's going to do that anyway to some extent. And, you know, you can interface with them and see if they would review my work.
If I may comment, I don't think in any way we're impugning your integrity, sir. I mean, you're obviously very, very qualified. And I think it was more just an insulate, insulative value between the applicant and the industrial hygienist. I think that's, that was the goal there.
Well, this is one way that it's done in other projects I've, I've done. The consultant is almost always hired by the owner of the project or by the contractor. And to satisfy the public's concerns, the public agency then oversees what I do. So that's an option for you.
Let me ask staff, do we have anybody in-house that has the qualifications and that could review, review his work?
Can I, can I just interject? We have Aaron Labarre here from Slow County Health.
Oh, great.
If you wanted to talk to him, he might...
I've been wondering if you were going to talk to him.
Yeah, I'd forgotten, and he seems an excellent, could he please come forward? Aaron? Thank you for sitting there all the time.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Aaron Labarre. I'm the supervisor of the Hazmat Program for the county of San Luis Obispo. As Michael said, we issue permits for the removal of above-ground tank systems, underground tank systems. Most of our experiences in underground tank systems, we have permitted some larger above-ground tank removals here in the county. The one, the Chevron removal on the hill, we did that one, I think, in 2004. We have some experience in this. We do have a permit application approved already. We know that's not actionable until the city gives approval if it, if that is the case. There are specified conditions within that that we verify and some we don't. So it's good that you asked me to, to talk about what we would typically verify, and that would be elements of the safe removal of the system. There's, even though I didn't write the specific permit, that was my specialist who's now left the county. So I'm going to do my best to sort of regurgitate some of those conditions. But we, we have a prescriptive inspection process that would precede any removal of piping to ensure that, you know, it's, it's safe to remove. Michael did go into some level of that, and he did work on this, on the application for removal. So, and my specialist did review that. So most of our inspections would be scheduled for pre-demolition of the tank and the piping to ensure that the removal does not impact the public. We also coordinated with the city of Morro Bay Fire Department, Fire Chief, and the, oh, gosh, now I can't remember, it was a fire inspector, it was a few years ago, on making sure we incorporated their comments to incorporate in inspection, potentially joint inspection. We also will inspect the soil sampling beneath the piping and the tanks that are removed. The sampling that we don't typically observe is the air sampling. Typically, that can be, Air Pollution Control District may interface on that. I'm not sure what their conditions would be on that. And I don't know what level of involvement they would have to, you know, oversee Michael's work on that, the air sampling that is. And sometimes projects, commissions have environmental monitors that assist cities, sometimes county projects to assist with that oversight where they can drop in unannounced to verify those results. That's a decision you can make on this. What else was I going to add?
So ground, ground monitoring, you know, bores?
Well, the soil sampling, we would evaluate that. We would, I'd have an inspector evaluate the sampling process. And it just depends on the project scope and how much samples we're going to take. But typically, that would be observed.
And would you, would you oversee the water monitoring?
Water monitoring, at this stage, we're not, we're not actually requesting that. As Michael was describing, which is how the process goes stepwise, we first look at the quality of the soil, then we evaluate, you know, the results of that and to see what's warranted beyond that. We do know that there was a groundwater investigation in the past, and that was overseen by DTSC and the Water Board, and they closed the case based on the results and the potential impacts. One thing, that's one thing I wanted to add also. It is correct to say that, you know, when we issued, issued approval, it wasn't for remediation projects, for demolition. And we're very cognizant of that, because sometimes projects can, can drift a bit, you know, with agencies that are overseeing them and wanting to have more contaminated materials removed during, during a project. Having scope and limits on that's important. But there are some limits in our permits also. If there are defined waste materials that we find beneath the tanks, as Michael described, it is common to have a soil-bearing material, sand beneath these tanks to prevent corrosion. Typically, on those materials, we want to see those handled as wastes, you know, close after demolition. Heavily contaminated materials that are found in projects like this, we like to see those handled sooner than later. There were questions that came up regarding, I'd clarify this, just corroborate Michael's statements, there aren't requirements to remediate soils on-site. They can be taken off-site for processing, proper disposal and management that way. I think I, I don't know if I answered all your questions. I want to be respectful of your time.
Soil lead testing, you oversee that?
Soil lead testing?
Yeah.
Yes. So soil testing at prescribed intervals is something that we'd oversee for the suite of chemicals that have been known to have been released on the site or stored on the site, which would include lead and other metals potentially.
Okay. Do we have any other questions for County Health?
Not, I'm not sure if this is your purview, maybe it'll be yours, regarding cultural... cultural, Native American resources?
Yeah, that, that wouldn't be our scope. We're, we're gonna, our, our scope is.
Just hazmat.
Yeah, just hazmat and then as, you know, we also oversee, like Michael also described too, we would oversee potentially a assessment and potential remediation if that's warranted.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but that's our limit. We don't deal with cultural resources.
Okay, got it, got it. Okay. Okay. I think we're good. Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay. So, we're getting back to, you know, who controls the paycheck here, you know, the checkbook. So, hold for a second. So, Scott and, and council, where are we going with this? What are, what do you guys feel? I'm, I'm getting more and more comfortable with oversight. You know, what do you guys, what are we thinking? I mean.
I'm, I'm with Commissioner Engraffia. I think it's a, I think it's a, it's a good thing for the community to feel, perception's a reality sometimes and I, I think it just, it's a good thing, so.
Okay. Yeah, again, I, I stand by what I said. I think it's, it's a good thing. I, I don't see anything critical, criticizing in it. I hope you don't interpret it as that. And I, but I just think that it would go a long way in terms of showing it to the community.
Richard?
I agree with Joe.
Okay.
Another option that I think Aaron briefly alluded to is that in some of these cases, the city, or I've, we've done this with schools, for instance, they will have a third-party, they will hire a third-party consultant to spot-check. And I've acted in that role a number of times. I've been hired by a stakeholder of, somewhere in the, in the process to oversee the contractors or the owner's consultant and I'm hired to drop in and inspect or watch their sampling methods or so on and sort of spot-check and review their reports. So, that's an option for you would be to hire a third-party if you don't have somebody in-house who is, is qualified to do it. But you might find, in addition to the county's prescribed oversight, your, your fire department hazmat people, for instance, might be able to be a cross-check.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so, so I'm looking for a little guidance here from, from you guys.
Chair, something to consider is that the applicant did the same thing that's being proposed, paying the city for a consultant services, paid the city, but we hired him for the creation of the mitigated negative declaration.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's, it's something that's not unusual. In regards to the markup, if you will, the city has a regular fee that needs to be assessed pursuant to resolution. I mean, we could make a commitment to trying to, to the best of our ability to lower or waive the fee if possible, but I don't think right now, tonight, we could do anything other than say, you know, fees will be paid as applicable and we will attempt to waive them or lower them, you know, as possible given the circumstances.
Okay, 'cause I think that's above our pay scale. You know, for figuring fees, we don't have the expertise or the knowledge or the base.
My concern, sitting here this evening with it, is that our fees are based on an adopted master fee schedule. It's done yearly by resolution and that's the fee.
Yeah.
It's whatever the fee is for the consultant plus administrative costs of 25%. So, I understand why it's a concern to them and, but I think Mr. Newmeyer is correct. Maybe we can look into options about reducing its, um, administrative costs.
Okay, so how would we condition that? Do you guys?
Condition number 11, under planning conditions, which is on page eight, we would modify that.
So, I think we would add something to the fact, this is not as fine-tuned as I'd like, but environmental consultant to be contracted by the city and reimbursed by the applicant. And I'm not really sure how to address the attempt to keep city fees minimal.
Maybe something like, fees shall be reviewed to, for.
Chair, maybe we could add at the end, comma, and city will make best effort to reduce or waive applicable fees.
Okay, great. I'm glad you're adding the language. So, okay, so we've got a couple of, we've got the conditions, we've got the video, videoing of the lateral and the mains.
Yeah, that's condition nine.
That's a new condition nine on page 10 for Public Works. And then Chair, you'd mentioned adding some language to condition 8A concerning reimbursement for any damage done by trucks, specifically you'd mentioned sewer laterals or waterline laterals in the right-of-way.
Right.
Okay. So, I have some proposed language for that. So, condition 8A would be changed to read, applicant agrees that issuance and acceptance of a building permit for demolition is conditioned on applicant guarantees and warrants that any damage caused by or arising from such demolition activities to city facilities, e.g. curb, berm, street, sewer line, water line, comma, any public improvements, taking out the word or, and then, comma, sewer laterals, comma, or waterline laterals in the right-of-way, shall be repaired by applicant at no cost to the city of Morro Bay and then add or any other party.
Great.
And, once we have finalized the revisions of these conditions that we're talking about here, we definitely wanna see if the applicant's agreeable to these and see on the record whether or not he is or isn't. And also, I would suggest that we confirm that the applicant's agreeable to all of these conditions in the resolution on the record.
Okay. Come forward.
I, I was wondering still about the irrigation plan, maybe?
Oh.
You know, are we gonna request that, you know, they're gonna be seeding, right?
There is a three-year evaluation on trees.
No, I was thinking about that hydroseed.
Yeah, I think.
Coming in erosion control.
If we can add, you know, and revegetation.
A revegetation irrigation plan or not?
'Cause it may, hydroseeding sometimes doesn't need to be, to be irrigated.
Okay.
You know, if it's done in the proper, the proper month and we get enough, we get enough rain, the hydroseeding can, if it's a native mix.
What if, what if it doesn't?
Well, that's why if it's reevaluated at a three-year, three-year time period, it's already been established.
There's, if I could interrupt, there's a condition that requires erosion control for disturbed areas and prescribes the planting and the requirement for erosion control is to make sure that the, the grass has taken root. So, it's, if it's planted in August, then it's probably gonna require some temporary irrigation. If it's planted in November, then it'd probably find on its own. It also depends on the, the blend and the, the type of hydroseed used.
Yeah, and irrigation can, doesn't need to be an irrigation plan. It could be, you know, a couple of water trucks that come out just to make sure that it's established.
And so, that's already in there?
Okay.
Yeah, the requires, the requirements to be established. We want, we want it in place and so, that's what we would monitor to make sure that it happens, you know, that it takes.
And then, one more thing that I had in my notes on the cultural resources. I know that it's been stated that, you know, it's probably disturbed, but is it, are we gonna have a, a cultural resource person available there that's approved by maybe the Northern Shumesh Tribal Council?
There's monitoring and training to make sure that anyone on-site doing work on staff understands what they're looking for and the appropriate action when that, if it's discovered.
And is it gonna be a, a, that monitor, is he, that person gonna be approved by, like, the Northern Shumesh Tribal Council or, or is it just?
I believe that is stated in there. I mean.
I think it's, I think it's a, it's an archaeological and culturally affiliated monitor, I believe.
Yeah.
Typically, it's like an archaeologist and, and a monitor from the tribe.
Culturally affiliated, yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah, it was part of the MDN. Okay.
Chairman Commissioners, for the record, Jeff Reed, legal counsel, on behalf of the applicant, we confirm that we accept all of the revised conditions that have been described and discussed and we also consent to and approve all of the other conditions that are set forth in the draft of the resolution that was distributed.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And Chair, if I may, one last item is that council and I were negotiating a performance agreement and we just wanted to get on the record that the final form that I believe was sent over today.
I haven't gotten that yet.
Okay, well, the final performance agreement that I believe we'd negotiated a few weeks ago.
Yeah.
I just wanted to get on the record that they were in agreement with those terms.
Are you?
Yes.
Okay, great.
And for the record, that performance agreement specifically addresses, among other things, the requirement for a bond and also for the greater insurance requirements that we talked about earlier.
Right, I think some of the drafts had some blanks on those, but those dollar amounts we've now kinda confirmed.
Yes. Now, did we have a completion schedule or a completion timeframe that the project needed to be completed by if it was started by a certain date? So, do we have a duration included?
The documents anticipate three months and, and I think the regulating conditions, the nesting season and the rainy season, kinda provide you your guidelines. There's a very narrow window when they can do the work and I think there will have to be some, some hope that the weather will comply because.
Well, what I'm concerned about is not so much, you know, the three-month timeframe 'cause that's gonna be determined by, by the various, you know, schedules of, of nesting birds and stuff. But what I'm concerned about is maybe having a two-year duration on, on the project as an outside so that if it goes past that or gets abandoned, we have an, an end date?
The performance agreement states that I think it's a 14-day delay, not caused by the city or uncontrollable conditions, is cause for invoking the provisions of the bond.
Okay, okay.
And I believe there was a two, a two-year limit term for the, the permit.
Right.
And I hesitate, but I guess I would like to ask that you consider, you know, if there are, if there is litigation.
Right.
That there be an opportunity to have tolling of that two-year period in the face of that litigation, that we would give notice and then there could be tolling on that basis. 'Cause sometimes it's difficult to get those cases done and then get back into, and have that be as a device of having us lose the permit. And I don't believe there was tolling language in the draft and if you could.
Yeah, I would foresee that there would be a, the start date would be start of construction or start of demolition.
We're referring to, you need to start within two years? That's what you're referring to?
Right, right, that there be some tolling in the event that there's litigation. That would, that would, you know, prevent us from moving forward.
I believe that that would just be normal routine, that a court would be able to toll it if there was litigation. I mean, if, we could put something in there if everyone's agreeable with it.
Okay, I'm, I'd be agreeable to that, that's only fair.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay. And then, you know, the other thing we need to realize too, that we haven't stated much, but it has come up, that there is a, there is a risk to the community of not doing anything too. We have weathering of existing paints, we have lead paint that's, that's being exposed and being eroded. We've got further contamination and maybe migration of hydrocarbons that are in the soil. So, you know, a no-project carries risks with it also. So, I don't think that's been stated here before and I, you know.
You could easily call it a very attractive nuisance that might be all too attractive to teenagers and adolescents.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, do we have a motion?
Excuse me, Chair.
Yes.
Perhaps, just for the record, we should make sure we go through all the different changes, conditions, unless you feel that it's sufficient, what we've already stated?
No, let's, let's got the eye.
Okay. So, the revisions that have been proposed by Planning Commission and also applicant has agreed to, on page 10, condition 8, under Public Works conditions, 8A is now changed to and agreed to. Applicant agrees that issuance and acceptance of a building permit for demolition is conditioned on applicant guarantees and warrants that any damage caused by or arising from such demolition activities to city facilities, e.g. curb, berm, street, sewer line, water line, comma, any public improvements, comma, sewer laterals, comma, or waterline laterals in the right-of-way, comma, shall be repaired by applicant at no cost to the city of Morro Bay or any other party.
Okay.
I will be adding a condition nine to the Public Works conditions on page 10 involving video. I believe Planner Hubbard has the language for that.
Applicants shall provide video of sewer laterals at homeowner's request and sewer mains along approved truck routes prior to and after the demo work is completed. Applicant will work with the city Public Works Department to determine location of water lines in the street impacted by truck traffic and take appropriate measures to survey the condition pre and post demo work.
And then, also for environmental compliance monitor, this was planning condition 11 on page eight. This is involving the environmental, qualified independent environmental compliance specialists being contracted with, through the city. It's to read now, the applicant shall retain a qualified independent environmental compliance specialist to be contracted with the city of Morro Bay and to be paid for by the applicant through reimbursement to the city to oversee and document compliance with all approved project-related mitigation measures as well as environmental regulatory requirements pertaining to the proposed demolition activities. Job duties and reporting protocols shall be subject to approval of the Community Development Director, comma, and city will make best efforts to reduce or waive applicable fees. And then furthermore, there will be in addition that for the two-year standard requirement to begin activities after the issuance of the permit, that there will be tolling of that two years upon the commencement of any possible litigation in a court.
Okay. Okay, and then, and then we didn't have to, did we have to do anything with location of the replacement trees? We'd, we'd mentioned that, is that at the, you know, Community Service Director approval? Okay.
Plus, that's unacceptable.
No, that's, that's fine with me. And then, and so our vegetation was gonna be established and required maintenance for three, for three years, so we're good on that.
Yeah, it's conditioned that way, so you're good.
Okay. Okay, so, back to, to a motion. Somebody wanna attempt it?
I, I move that we adopt resolution PC 15-18 as, as amended by the conditions, the following conditions, public work condition 8A as amended, public work condition nine, an added condition, planning condition 11 as amended, and a distinct tolling provision with respect to the two-year period of permit.
Okay, you, we have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have discussion?
I kinda wanna reiterate what you said about, about doing nothing. You know, I, I think this is the best for our community and I think we, we vetted it properly and I think we did a due diligence and appreciate the applicant's patience and understanding and of our community standards here and hope for a good project, so.
Yeah, I'll echo that. I think very well said, Jesse. Call the, call the roll?
Commissioner Sadowski?
No.
Commissioner Engraffia?
Yeah, yes.
Commissioner Verone?
Yes.
Chair Lur?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And I, one thing I'd also like to say is, I'd like to thank the, the community for coming out and making this a better project. And I'm sure everybody will remain diligent and will, will keep everybody on their toes and to the, to the latter. And I, I hope we have a, you know, I'm pretty sure, but I hope we'll have a good And I, I hope we have a, you know, I'm pretty sure, but I hope we'll have a good result and we'll have mend some of this community animosity that has, that has sprung up around this, you know. So thanks, thanks, everybody. Okay, do we want to take a minute, or do we want to move on? What else we got? Richard?
Yeah, I was, I was gonna ask a future agenda item, but I don't have this company discussion. Future agenda.
Okay, thanks. Okay, well, okay, well, thank you. We, we try, we don't always pull it off. Yeah. Okay. I, you know, the one thing I forgot about was, I never asked for ex parte communication on this. Did anybody have anything to, okay, great. We're a little late. Little late. Okay, so moving on, that was a big chunk. New business, we have none. Unfinished business, we have none. So, Planning Commissioners' comments, does anybody else want to say anything?
By all accounts, the concert that I've mentioned at several of the meetings sponsored by the Morro Bay Open Space Alliance at St. Timothy's on Friday, the 8th, was a, was a very big success, and it's put the organization on the map and done significant work towards our fundraising to actually buy Cerito Peak and preserve it forever.
Well, thanks. Thanks for that, Jesse.
Yes, just want to say thanks to the City Council for appointing me to the WORF CAC and remind and help me out with this, Scott. There's a meeting on Saturday at the Community Center at 1:30 to discuss the Water Recovery Facility, and that is hosted by Council members.
Yes.
Okay.
I, I, I asked, I talked, I have a friend of mine that I talked to about an idea, and I would like to know if we could have a future agenda item, but it would just be a discussion amongst the Planning Commissioners, and it has to do with the property of the, where the wastewater, existing wastewater treatment plant is. And I have a friend of mine that probably can come in and talk a little bit more about it, but it's, has to do with mobile warming homes for the homeless in our community and maybe a collaboration with other cities. Without getting into a big discussion about it, last year, my wife and I attended the Climate Change Symposium in Sacramento, and one of the things that really came and hit us was the urban heating zones and the migration of the community, you know, homeless community that's kind of, they're anticipating coming to the coast, you know, just from the weather, you know, from the heat, to get away from the heat. And, as we all know, we have a housing issue and a homeless issue, and this friend of mine had a, he was running for council in another city, another county actually too, and he had an idea where he made inroads with the, using retired bus, retiring the buses, and they would come in and refurbish them and then making these, making cots in there and just having these mobile, mobile home, warming rooms for, just for the sake of humanity, you know? And so, if we can just have that, like, I'd like to just bounce it off the Commissioners, maybe if we can.
Can you identify a future agenda items? I need like three, you know, three nod your head though, I'm not going to do it based on one person's direction. Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, sure. It's probably, it's probably going to be a couple of months out. We got a whole bunch of packed agendas coming forward because of the general planning LCP update, so it's not going to be directly, but I'll put it up on my board, so when we free up a little bit, then we can put it on there, and I'll work with you, Richard, on, so you can hook up the, your contact and bring them forward.
Yeah, I'll introduce you to my bro.
Okay, all right. So, yeah, yeah, I'll reach out to you on that. So, that'll be good.
All right, cool. Thank you, man.
Okay, and then, I guess that's, my comment's more of a question, is we've got our joint meeting with the WORF CAC coming up, and-
So, so, yes, you're gonna have a long July 3rd. So we do have, so the Planning Commission, in a joint meeting with, with WORF CAC, is going to be reviewing the EIR for the, we're starting a plant. That's on July 3rd, that starts at 3:00 and will end at 6:00, and then for, at 6:00 o'clock, we'll go into our regular Planning Commission meeting, at which point, I think it'll be reviewing 570 Kings and back to Module 3, because we haven't been able to get into that yet. This will be the third meeting we've scheduled, hopefully we'll actually get to open it up and look at it. So that's what's going to be going on that day. So that's going to be, that's going to be a long one for you guys.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great. And then we still have the vacation rental meeting with tomorrow-
Tomorrow night? It's tomorrow night, again, Community Center, 6 to 8 o'clock, hosted by Council members heading in McPherson.
And the WORF CAC joint meeting's at the Community Center?
It's in here. Is it in here? Yeah, yeah, we're, yeah, it's in here. It'll be at the Events Hall.
Okay. So, do you have any other announcements, or?
That was enough. Thanks for picking up on them all, though, I didn't have to remember them myself, so.
Okay, so at this point, we'll adjourn to the next regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting at the Veterans Memorial Building, 209 Surf Street, on July 3rd at 6:00 p.m., but we'll actually adjourn a joint meeting at 3:00 p.m. that day. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, man.
Thanks.